Hi, everybody. It's Laurie Scott. Can you all hear me okay?
We can hear you well, Minister. Thank you for coming. We're just getting ourselves organized here.
Yep, feel good. Okay, hello, your worship. How are you? And I'm sorry, there's there. Hello.
Yeah, I'm doing well. Thank you, Minister.
Good.
We look forward to having you here today.
Thank you. I'm very happy to join you. And I'd love to come in person, but in the future.
The circumstances probably don't permit that right now, but we'll be happy to have you here in person when we can.
Thank you very much.
Thirty seconds to show.
Minister, just so you're aware, we're going to take you off the top. Before we do that, I've just got some administrative matters I've got to deal with. But we won't, we won't take too much time before we get to you.
Oh, look at please, happy to be here. Anything is fine. And is Mr. Did Minister Romano make it?
I'm looking for him right now on my screen. I don't have him yet, but I'm sure I'm sure he will be here.
He's just being let in and we are live on show.
Okay, so we are live. I want to welcome everybody to our council meeting. I want to thank our media partners and our broadcasting partners for recording on our media, our meeting and broadcasting it. Before we call the meeting to order, though, I wanted to take a moment and recognize terrible news that that we've all received recently of the 215 children that were found on the former Kamloops Indian Residential School site. We know we have our own history here in Algoma in Sault Ste. Marie with the Wabunash Home for Girls and the Shingwak Residential School. And I, there's a very heartening tribute at Algoma University in honor of the 215 children that we've been told that had been found at the Kamloops Residential School site. So I wanted just to tell the community that the city is flying its flags at half mass as of 8:00 AM this morning and will continue to fly those flags at half mass for 215 hours to 7:00 AM on June 8. You will notice that I am and the city councillors are, our senior staff are wearing orange ribbons in commemoration. And I want to recognize the terrible tragedy and that the terrible truth of the Canadian Residential School system. Our deepest condolences to all our First Nations brothers and sisters and Garden River First Nation, Bajauana First Nation, and our urban indigenous population. Before we begin the meeting, I wanted to take a moment of silence in honor and respect for the lives lost. And I'd ask that we do that now for one moment. Thank you. Thank you. The magnitude of the revelation that there are, there is a mass grave at the Kamloops Indian Residential School is a demonstration of the historic pain and suffering that Canada's First Nation peoples have been, have been subjected to by, by our history. There's very little that any of us can do to rectify that. But what we can begin to do is acknowledge the truths, acknowledge how what we've done has impacted our First Nation communities, our First Nation friends, and how that trauma is generational and how it impacts them to this day. One of the things that we can do is acknowledge the truths and recognize them. Another thing we can do is listen. We, we are trying our best to do that, but it's evident that we have certainly a lot more work to do. In some of our efforts, we meet regularly with First Nation leaders in our community and we have established a bowting advisory circle where we talk about community issues. One of the things that was suggested to me at that circle was that it would be positive to do a land recognition at the beginning of all of our city council meetings. And I accepted that as really good advice. And I was going to begin doing that when we returned to, to council chambers and to our physical presence with each other. I thought it would be meaningful if the first time I did it, we were all back together in the council chambers. But I don't think I should wait any longer. So to begin this meeting, I am going to do a land acknowledgement and I will do a land acknowledgement at the beginning of every council meeting for the remainder of this term. Acknowledge with respect that we are in Robyn Secure on Treaty territory, that this land is the territory of the N'Djinabe, home of Grand River First Nation, Bajauana First Nation, and the St. Marie and A.T. Council. I also want to acknowledge the large urban indigenous population. Thank all of them for sharing their land with us and recognize that this area is historically known as Bowating. Madam Clerk, if you can please start the meeting.
Under Agenda Item 1, I have a motion by councillors Nero and Hillsinger, resolved that the minutes of regular council meeting of May 10, 2021 be approved.
All in favor? Motion is carried.
And under Agenda Item 3, Declaration of Recunyary Interest, councillor Shoemaker has declared with respect to bylaw 2021-99 as one of the parties as a client of the law firm. Councillor Shoemaker also with respect to bylaws 2021-114 and 2021-115, 249 Old Garden River Road and 260 Mill Creek Drive as the party as a client of the law firm. I didn't, wasn't advised of any other pecuniary interest?
Seeing none, council. That brings us to item four, Madam Clerk.
Under Agenda Item 4, I have a motion by councillors Nero and Shoemaker, resolved that the agenda for May 31, 2021 and addenda number one and number two, city council meeting as presented, be approved.
All in favor? Motion carried. Madam Clerk, that brings us to Agenda Item 5, which are our proclamations and delegations, council. We are going to go out of order here. We have the Honorable Laurie Scott, Minister of Infrastructure with us and our own NPP, the Honorable Ross Romano, Minister of Colleges and Universities. Council, you have a very big decision tonight on your council agenda, a little later on in the agenda. And Minister Romano and Minister Scott are here to make an announcement and share some information with you that you will need in order to make that decision. I appreciate their attendance and I'm going to pass the matter to Minister Romano to introduce Minister Scott and we will hear Minister Scott's announcement. Minister Romano, welcome back to council. It's been a number of years since you've been here and the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and councillors. As you were asking the question, I really wanted to put my hand up. So, you know, force of habit, I guess, all those years on council, I was ready to vote with you all, but very, very happy to be with you today on a very special day. And I, and I really want to start off by saying as a starting point for everyone out there watching at home, Ross Romano, Indigenous, Kauai, Bowating and Dojaba, Chijia, Gigawab, Nam, that's a pleasure to be with you all again here today. Very excited to return to council. This is a special day for a number of reasons and I think that what you started off with, Mayor, is so incredibly important. I think when we talk about land recognition, it's important that we always remember that we weren't here first and that's why we do this. On a day like today, it's so incredibly important as we consider what's happened around the, the country and when we remember the effects of the residential school system and that those effects last with us here today in such a significant way. I really want to just tee up an opportunity here for Minister Scott to chat and there's some great news, but just it matters. When you look at the announcement that I just had the privilege of making only a short 10 days or so, go on behalf of Minister Scott for Kauai Gaigon at Algoma University, our very own Indigenous Cultural Centre, which is going to honor and remember and ensure that these types of atrocities like what we heard of again here today in Kamloops cannot happen again. So I just want to say, Minister Scott and I have been working on a number of initiatives around infrastructure for, for the province, but certainly obviously our community. I have been giving Minister Scott quite a number of calls and hard time and Minister Scott will know as all of you who sat on council with me and you, Mr. Mayor, know very, very well, I tend to be quite long-winded. I don't want to be too long-winded right now with my introduction. I know you have a very, very long agenda today. But I want to introduce you to a very, very good friend, someone who is no stranger to the importance of having really important infrastructure investments in a smaller community like our own. And Minister Scott, I just want to say thank you so much for joining us. Thank you so much for the announcement a few weeks ago or 10 days ago. So incredible. And I think you can see that even just from how this day is going on. But also for a very important announcement we're going to chat about today. So without further ado, I want to turn it over to you, Minister Scott, to say a few words. And thank you so much for joining us virtually here in Sault Ste. Marie.
Well, good afternoon and thank you very much to my colleague and my friend, the Honorable Ross Romano, Ontario's Minister of Colleges and Universities, and of course, your local MPP and former councillor that I also thought, Ross, you were going to raise your hand when they were doing the prior business. But thank you, Ross, for welcoming me to your hometown and to share some exciting news for your local sports and recreation community. And I mentioned earlier, it's a pleasure to be here, although it's not in person. I am looking forward to coming to the Sioux one day soon. And to see many of you in person and to further look at the sights of what I'm about to mention. So I'd like to thank Mayor Provinzano and the city council for their support of bringing this important project and many others to life for the people of Sault Ste. Marie. And as your MPP does, it does have a hotline to me and certainly I get the messages from the Community Needs and he's an incredible advocate. But all of you, your strong sense of community and tireless advocacy is why we're all here today to celebrate this great news. We know that investing in local infrastructure is helping to strengthen your local economy, encourage an active and healthy lifestyle, all while supporting your community as it recovers from the impacts of the COVID-19 pandemic. That's why our government has made investing in infrastructure one of our top priorities even through the pandemic. We've committed $145 billion over 10 years to build Ontario's infrastructure and close the gap that had grown from years and years unaddressed. But I'm sure you're wondering what this means for Sault Ste. Marie. It means to date, our government, through my ministry alone, has invested over $35 million to build infrastructure your community needs right now and we won't stop there. These investments include $5 million towards your local public transit system to improve the safety and reliability for transit users. And just last week, as discussed, Minister Romano made the exciteme announcement of nearly $6 million of provincial funding for the Cultural Centre at Algoma University, celebrating local indigenous heritage. And over $6 million through the Ontario Community Infrastructure Fund that provides opportunities for small and rural communities to build the projects they need the most, like safer bridges and smoother roads, has come your way over the past three years. Your community can also look forward to our province's investment to get every household across Ontario connected to reliable, high-speed internet by 2025. More on that in the coming weeks. Our government understands the need for investments in local communities and I know that Sault Ste. Marie residents will benefit from these projects for years to come. And so I'm going to turn it back over to Minister Romano, who will share our latest and probably most exciting investment with all of you. Over to you, Minister Romano, and thank you for the opportunity to be with you all today.
Thank you so much, Minister Scott, for joining us today. A pleasure to have you here. I can't wait to have you in Sioux in person. Going to have you out to the lake for the bonfire that I promised you a long time ago. But moving on here, as Minister Scott's alluded to everyone, we're excited to share some really important news with you all. We've had some great projects, some great initiatives that have been able to move forward over the last three years, as Minister Scott has just alluded to. And there's been one that has evaded us for some time and many of you have raised this with me for a very long time. It's one that's on your agenda today. It's the Twin Patterina. I know there was a lot of concerns when we weren't able to move this forward under the ICIP program that led to the Cultural Centre we just discussed, but the, the project was one that I know was a huge priority. I want to thank the mayor. I want to thank the council for your continued advocacy for a twin patterina. And that's why we're here today. Minister Scott and I are here to join you. That although we weren't able to fit this in the ICIP program as we announced in the budget, we were able to secure some other infrastructure dollars where the province is going to be forwarding the funding, both the federal and the provincial components of what that ICIP program was. The long story is, is the $25 million project for a twin patterina is now going to be contributed, the full federal and provincial share amounting of $18 million. Very proud to say that Minister Scott has been able to find us $18 million for our twin patterina. So we are able to assist you at this time with the twin patterina. So I want to thank you all. I guess I'll pause for the applause here.
Yeah, everybody's on mute though, Ross. So, sorry, Minister, Minister Romano, so you can visually see it, but you can't.
Yes, exactly. Well, I can, I can hear it in my ears and I, I thank you very much, everyone, for that. I know that Mayor, I can remember actually being in your office. I was actually just looking at this document earlier in the, in the weekend. We were before council or before you with, with my previous chief of staff, I remember who was actually brothers from the Sioux, but anyway, I digress. And we were meeting with you and talking about the priorities and this was number one for, for the community and it has been a number one priority. And I remember being on council when we had a CO2 week at the McNeek and I remember parents talking about their, their, their kids being taken to the emergency room at the, at the hospital because of that. That was a very trying time. And I remember meeting with Mayor Provinzano and Minister, Minister MacLeod was with us in the Sioux and we had gone to visit the Twin Pat or the McMeekin arena. And this is something that our community has been certainly asking for, for some time. And we, we certainly see it from a health and safety perspective, the importance of it, that's critical and the demand. But when we look at all of the projects that we have and when you think of all that's going to be going on in the city of Sault Ste. Marie, this is a very difficult time that we've endured over COVID-19. But we have indicated that we want to be able to do everything in our power to be able to help our community, help northern communities move forward. If you look back to when I first got into this, this, this goal of politics, it was about how do we make Sault Ste. Marie a better place? That's what we always want to, we're all striving for. How do we make this community better? For, for young people to want to stay in, the Home to Stay Initiative that I've spoken about for so long and now recently the I-Harts Sault Ste. Marie, I think we have so many great things to talk about. Just imagine all the excitement coming out of a COVID. And while we need this economic recovery more than ever, we're going to have an $18 million project happening. And like, just imagine on a day like today, when you think of the atrocities of the residential school system, to have an Indigenous Cultural Centre, one of the only ones in the entire country. You know, there's one in Winnipeg, there's, there's, there's one in British Columbia, we'll have the only one on this side of the country at Shingwak Residential School. And just having been on those front steps today, I attended and dropped, you know, attended with a pair of shoes to see the site there for anybody that's been, it's, it's just, it's incredible. You feel it, what's there. But an $18 million project in the, in the east end of the city was such a tremendous impact, tremendous impact for our community. And to have a $25 million project happening, being built in the west end of the city. We also had the incredible news last week that I know everyone was so excited about. We are finally securing and have secured our residential withdrawal management facility, the level three facility and more, more than we'd ever hoped for out of that facility. That construction is going to be going on over the next year. All the other projects I see councillor do for, I remember all of the monies that we were able to secure through the housing initiatives. Of course, I know how passionate you and also councillor Hollingsworth about the initiatives around the DSAB and around affordable housing in the community. The incredible project we were able to afford several million dollars for the projects that are going to allow two new families to be able to experience homeownership. I can't wait to see that project be able to finally get completed. I know with COVID, we've been really struggling to be able to get some of these things concluded, but we've just had such a tremendous year and that's even not to forget about things like the, the connecting links, two years in a row securing $3 million in connecting links, which has allowed construction on Black Road, finally the widening of Black Road and the, the resurfacing of Trunk Road. There are just so many projects that I know that Mr. Mayor, you're probably looking saying, Ross, you're, you're, you're true to your form. You're taking way too long on the clock and we have a very long agenda today. I don't want to take up much more of your time other than to say the goal has always been to make our community a better place to be. I thank you for your advocacy for this important project. This is going to be incredible for our community when we need it at such a critical time as we come forward out of COVID-19 and we look at our recovery, we're seeing the numbers come down. There's, there's a horizon ahead that looks pretty bright for us and I'm very, very, very excited for all of the projects that we're going to have going on for, for all of the great work that's been done. And I always like to say we work better when we work together. So I thank you for all of the amazing work. And I, you know, I even just, just thinking about it for the west end of the city, I looked at councillor Scott and councillor Agardy again. You know, we've got Teneris happening. Imagine a $9 million project that leveraged $117 million and it created 153 jobs. This has just been a tremendous, tremendous last few years and I really want to thank you all for your continued efforts and, and working together to get there. So enjoy council, Mr. Mayor, and hopefully I can have another day to come back and vote again.
So, so listen to that, Ross, by no means was I going to limit you in any of that and give that announcement. You, you had the opportunity to say whatever you like. I want to thank, on behalf of council, on behalf of the city of Sault Ste. Marie, I want to thank both you, Minister Romano, in your role, but also as our MPP and Minister Scott for this announcement today. Minister Scott, I want to assure you that this money will be very well spent. It is a $31 to $33 million project, depending on some decisions council makes tonight. In, in any event, it's a substantial project for our community. And, and these funds make it much more likely that we can realize it in a much more fiscally responsible way. Without the support, we would have, we would have had to look at the scope of the project and also would have had to look at some very significant long-term debt. We are very fortunate as a municipality and we have a very low debt level. One of the reasons why we have a low debt level is we are hesitant to borrow significantly into the future. We would have had to do that to proceed with this project, but for your announcement today. Your announcement today makes the project much more realizable for us and allows us to do it with a much more compact financial timeframe and a much more responsible way to the ratepayers of the city of Sault Ste. Marie. It's important that we have these type of facilities for the quality of life of our residents. And this facility has always been intended. It was originally developed as a larger facility with this, this capacity added, but it was scoped down by previous councils. And we're happy to be in a position to be able to make the facility what it was always intended to be, to add this function to that part of our city. And I can assure you that we've done the, the really important staff work of making sure there was demand and need for it. And I want to thank staff for the very good work that they did on this project. So this is a real team effort from city staff. And then city council having the desire to move the project forward and getting us to today. The tender is before council tonight and the information that you're providing us with today makes it that much more likely that we will be able to realize the project. I want to thank you very significantly for that. The investment that you're making today is a very substantial investment. And I want to recognize the quality of it and the size of it and tell you that, behalf of city council, we really appreciate it being made and it's very helpful to us as a council, but also to the ratepayers of the city of Sault Ste. Marie. So we, with, with that, if I, if I start going around to all the councillors, once I get to one, I have to go to the other 10 of them. We do have a long agenda tonight, so I'm, I'm not going to do that. Minister Scott, Minister Romano, I would welcome you if you had any further comments you wanted to make in response to mine and then we will likely move on in our agenda.
Thank you very much for the opportunity and I'll bring my skates when I come up.
Happy to have you. Mr. Romano?
I am great. I just want to say thank you again, everyone. Look forward to seeing you. All the best. Enjoy, enjoy the rest of council today and I will sign off. Thanks, everybody. Have a great day.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Madam Clerk, we should continue with our delegations. Council, we will get back to the decision on the twin pat after the planning agenda. So we're going to do the remainder of our delegations. We'll move to consent if there's time. At 5:30, we'll go to planning. When we come out of planning, we will deal with the twin path decision. Madam Clerk, the next delegation on our agenda.
Under Agenda Item 5.1, there's a proclamation for Spina bifida and hydrocephalus awareness month.
Happy to make that proclamation. Want to acknowledge and recognize Troy and Annette Chandler, who work on this together every year and developed a really nice event in our community to raise money and awareness for hydrocephalus, spina bifida. Whereas hydrocephalus is an excessive accumulation of fluid in the brain, may be present at birth and may develop at any later stage in life. Whereas spina bifida is a birth defect and develops within the first four weeks of pregnancy, resulting in varying degrees of permanent neurological damage. Whereas there is no cure for either of these conditions that result in varying degrees of disability. Whereas hydrocephalus can, there's people with spina bifida and hydrocephalus, their families in the public. Whereas health can is claimed June as spina bifida and hydrocephalus awareness month. Whereas there are many people who are not aware of these, of the association or that offers support, information, education programs and funds research to find ways to prevent and treat these conditions. Whereas hydrocephalus can encourage voluntary ones to learn more about these conditions. You appreciate the challenges faced by individuals affected by, by them. Now therefore, I, Christian Provinzano, as Mayor of the city of Sault Ste. Marie, hereby proclaim the month of June 2021 to be spina bifida and hydrocephalus awareness month in the city of Sault Ste. Marie. And I urge all citizens to give full consideration, attention, Spina Bifida and Hydrocephalus Association of Ontario for their work on behalf of those with spina bifida and hydrocephalus and their families. Thank you.
And under Agenda Item 5.2, Parks and Recreation Month.
Proclamation here for Parks and Recreation. Whereas in Sault Ste. Marie, we are fortunate to have a variety of recreation and park systems, providing countless recreational opportunities for residents and visitors to our community. Whereas recreation enhances quality of life, balanced living and lifelong learning. It helps people live happier and longer, develop skills and a positive self-interest in children and youth. Develops creativity, enhances healthy bodies and positive lifestyles. Whereas recreational building, participation builds family unity and social capital. Strengths volunteer and community development, enhances social interaction, creates community pride and vitality and promotes sensitivity and understanding to cultural diversity. And whereas parks, open space and trails provide active and passive outdoor recreation opportunities, help maintain clear air and water and promote stewardship of the natural environment. Whereas the benefits provided by recreation, recreation of the natural environment. Whereas the benefits provided by recreation programming and services boost the economy, enhance property values, attracting business and increase tourism. Whereas all levels of government, the voluntary sector, sector and private enterprise throughout the province participate in the planning, development and operation of recreational parks, programs, services and facilities. Therefore, I, Christian Provanzano, is mayor of the city of Sioux State Marine, hereby designate the month of June as Recreation and Parks Month in recognition of the benefits and value of recreation and parks. Thank you.
Agenda item uh, under agenda item five point three, Connie Rayner Elliott and Stephanie Poitres are, have joined the meeting uh for item seven point one point one, the memorial wall.
Okay, so we have Yeah, please, please, Madam Clerk, read the motion and we'll go from there.
I have a motion moved by councillors Nero and Shoemaker, resolved that the report of the C A O dated May thirty-first, twenty twenty-one concerning memorial wall be received and that council approves the fabrication of the wall in a landscaped area north of the Ronald A. Aaron Civic Center at an estimated cost of four thousand dollars to be funded from the mayor's office operating budget.
Okay, so thank you for that, Madam Clerk. So we have, I'm just gonna adjust my screen here because I don't have Connie and Stephanie on my main screen. Okay, so uh council, we have a delegation here. We also have a report on the agenda from the clerk. Uh perhaps I'll give a bit of context and background and then I'll I'll give uh Connie and Stephanie or either of them an opportunity to uh speak to you because they requested that. Uh as the C A O's report indicates, a number of months back, um uh SOYA through uh well, a group of representatives from SOYA reached out to me with a desire to do a memorial in the city for all the lives that uh we have lost to the opioid epidemic uh into addictions. And um they had uh raised the the possibility of of doing a white cross memorial like the memorial you saw in Sudbury. Uh but they wanted to to do something frankly that uh on city property or that the city participated in and supported, and they wanted to make sure that whatever they were doing was consistent with uh something the city was supportive of. Uh so what we did was we 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 listened and and told them, we we encouraged them to kind of undertake whatever activity they thought was most appropriate. But we listened and we looked at what other communities had done, really across North America, some communities in Canada, some communities in the United States. Uh and what they were doing to commemorate and memorialize and the lives, the 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 significant number of lives that we're losing to the opioid epidemic. Uh and then we we had some further meetings and discussions with uh the representatives of of the group that's here today. Uh and and after some city staff research and discussion internally, we landed on the project that is before you today. Uh for my part, I think it is uh important that the municipality uh engage in a way where uh it's clear we're supportive of a lot of the the families that are struggling through these very significant challenges and that have lost people uh to the opioid epidemic. And I think it's important that we participate in and de-stigmatizing uh and 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 uh and supporting uh that part of our community that that feels marginalized and neglected. Um and I'm really appreciative of the work um that frankly Lisa Bell in my office has done. And I'm really appreciative of the work that the C A O has done on this. Uh the C A O has taken a real significant leadership role in this and and I I appreciate his foresight and his compassion. And I wanna thank uh Connie and I wanna thank Steph, I wanna thank Lisa, I wanna thank Heather uh for reaching out to us and engaging with us um and and telling us frankly how how they're feeling and how members of their group are feeling. And trying to find something that we can work on together as a community. Uh you you're all aware that there is a small uh line item in mayor and council's uh budget that that does afford for some community development initiatives. Um and although, you know, we always want those community development initiatives to be celebratory, it's important that we also uh engage in other aspects of community development that 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 are important. And and this is, it is important. It is important that that families in our community who have lost loved ones know that they have our support, know that they would recognize that their loss uh and know that we stand with them to remove uh the stigma that often is carried with with uh addiction and substance, substance misuse. So with that noted, uh the report's in front of you, I wanna be clear that I uh categorically support moving forward uh with uh SOYA and and doing this project. I think it is uh an important project and I think it is a justifiable project and I'm I'm glad for my part uh to play a role in it, to be part of it. Uh Connie, Steph, which uh Steph, are you speaking first? I see you're unmuted.
Connie first.
Okay, Connie. You're gonna have to unmute yourself, Connie.
Thank you. I, worship mayor Provenciano, city council of Sioux State Marine. Uh my name's Connie Rayner Elliott. For those who don't know me, I am the founder of SOYA. Hey, SOYA was, it's over ten years old now. And it is heartbreaking when I consider consider the rising amount of their community members that we are losing and loved ones. SOYA has helped out over twenty-five hundred families and people in our community. We have a beautiful office in Sioux State Marine in the downtown core. Now, what we need is to end the stigma of substance use disorder. Our committee, our community and the entire SOYA family would like you all we would like to thank you all for your consideration of the memorial wall, the wall for those who are gone but never forgotten. With this, I'd like to introduce Stephanie Poitres, one of our wonderful SOYA family members.
Hi. Sorry, I'm Stephanie. I'm very nervous, so I apologize in advance. Your worship mayor Provenciano and city members of Sioux State Marine, city council members of Sioux State Marine. Thank you for your time and consideration on our proposal for the memorial wall. This will represent those we have lost during this opioid and substance abuse disorder crisis that we that has been and is still heavily affecting our beloved city more and more as each year goes by. I'm going to take a moment to tell you what this wall means to us. The stark reality is we are losing more and more people as each week goes by. And it is now rare that anyone is unaffected by substance abuse disorder and the opioid crisis. It is hard and it is heavy because loved ones who passed leave behind so many broken hearts. To have a place where we can remember each person individually with their own star on the wall to show that even though they have passed, they still matter, they were and are loved. And the love others have for them is still powerful and their lives mattered. I personally know one star that is going up on the wall, if approved. She was on the waitlist for treatment center and she didn't make it. Her life was so valuable and she represents so many. She's not the only one we have lost on a waitlist after reaching out for help. We've lost so many sons, daughters, fathers, mothers, aunts, uncles, cousins, grandparents, friends. And for many, we are grieving more than just one person. Having this place to go, to mourn with others, who will help with putting the energy towards ending the negative stigma associated with drug abuse disorder, the shame families feel and the aloneness in the mourning process. We hope it will help to bring people together, to support each other more, to show the value every human being has and that even though they passed away from something that gets judged so heavily, they are not worthless, they are important and loved and valuable, and we will not forget them. We hope that this can help inspire those who are struggling with substance abuse disorder to show that they are valuable, important and their lives matter. Love and hope goes a very long way for anyone who is struggling. Hope saves lives. This idea started when I seen a news article from Sudbury about the field of crosses. And I contacted Connie asking what the possibility of doing something like that for her town would be. And she was happily on board and together we formed a committee who wanted to see, who also wanted to see this happen in our city. These ladies are amazing. And they have either lost someone to overdose, struggling themselves, or helping someone who is struggling. It hits home with each of us and we are the voices of so many. It was then that we contacted Mayor Provenciano and we got a quick response and together with his team and our SOYA family, we came up with instead of a field of crosses, a beautiful memorial wall, one that will hold a star for each person we have lost at their family's request. This will be respectfully done. I thank you so much for your time and for your consideration.
Hey, council, I'm just gonna give the C A O a chance to add anything else that he he thinks is kind of appropriate to conversation considering what I've said and what Connie and Steph have said, and then we'll take your questions. Mr. C A O.
Mister Mayor, members of council, uh I don't really have a lot to add to Connie and Steph's uh presentation. Uh they've certainly said, I think, what needs to be said. I would like to acknowledge uh the uh assistance of Lisa Bell in the uh mayor's office in uh it working through this uh project and uh especially with the creative ideas.
Council, do we have any questions or comments? So I'm gonna go with councillor Bezo Allen and councillor Bruni.
Just a comment, um thank you, Mister Mayor. I really wanna thank Connie and Steph for coming. And uh for those of you that have never gone into the SOYA office, they do have a wall of photos of people who have been lost to addiction. And I think this really speaks to removing the shame from families and gives us a very good reminder as a community that addiction doesn't discriminate. It's any age, any gender, any socioeconomic class, any postal code address, it doesn't matter. And and it's a good reminder for us to be supportive of those that are suffering. And Connie and Steph, I really wanna um congratulate you on both your tenures. And a lot of people don't know it, but Connie works endlessly um from being at SOYA actively, plus a full-time career and even delivers food on weekends to those most vulnerable. So if you have a spare moment or wanna pick up a bag of groceries, uh right now they need uh toiletries and shoes and any food donations. And uh I really uh encourage you to reach out to uh SOYA when you're doing your day-to-day shopping as well and uh proud to uh proud to know you and uh I support this project and I really hope that it helps families and all of us as a as a reminder that um we all need um to get rid of the stigma and not have the shame. And and thank you both for coming and big shout out to mayor and and Malcolm. And I know Lisa Bell was probably a really great asset in doing this project, so I support it one hundred percent.
And councillor Bezo Allen, councillor Bruni.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. And first of all, I am saddened with the many lives that have been lost to the drug overdoses. Uh personally, I know several people uh that have passed away. It is a serious problem in the Sioux. But I guess I wanna ask Connie and Stephanie uh just a question. Regarding this four thousand dollars, would it be better use if we can provide it uh to the agencies to help uh individuals? Would that be better? Uh and I'm just asking a question. It's taxpayers' money. And uh I know I've received several calls and several emails regarding this issue. And that's one of the questions that have come up. Would it be better if we uh use this money to help?
Um I can answer that. Okay, actually, this is going to be helping people in our community because when it comes to the trauma, where people don't have a place to go. I like, this is going to help not just with substance use disorder, but the mental well-being of so many left behind. I I've been, this has been going on for years. And I spend a lot of hours talking to people because they don't have a place to go. There is no more, there's no a lot of people don't even have their, not even in the obituaries. Okay, people end the stigma and people are ashamed and this would be like for four thousand dollars, I'm I'm, we're looking at like so many, we could spend millions and millions and millions of dollars, okay? And which, I mean, that's our end goal, right? To get everything fixed that we need to help people. This is a very small amount, four thousand dollars is basically a a drop in in the bucket, okay, when it comes to like, you know, helping out a huge organization, okay? This is going to help all people mentally where they can actually sit there and they can remember and they can have those conversations. So I could see if it was like, you know, half a million dollars, yes, uh four thousand? No, for I think this four thousand dollars that if it is approved, will actually help out so many people in so many ways. And just for, I'm just gonna put like a little
Sorry, I think Connie's frozen on us here.
Uh Mister Mayor, I I I thank you. No, no, I I took, I've heard Connie and I know her passion.
And weekends and holidays.
Okay, Connie, you froze for a second there, but I think we got, we got the substance of what you were saying. Steph, did you wanna add to that? Did you want a chance to address that question?
I just think that the wall is going to be impactful for we need more than four thousand dollars in in help for people with substance abuse disorder. Like we need more than that. And with the four thousand dollars going towards this wall, it's going to be long-term impactful for people.
Uh thank you. And and the question to uh Mister White uh regarding the upkeeping and the updating, uh is is that the city's responsibility?
Through you, Mister Mayor, to councillor Bruner, the city will have a part in that. Obviously, we will look to the group to assist us with the process and we still have the uh exact process uh to delineate and come to an agreement on. Uh that tonight is the first step to approve the location and the funding for it.
Yeah. Uh have we reached out to private partners for for this to Mister White?
Through you, Mister Mayor, to councillor Bruni. At this point, we have not.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mister Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Bruni. Uh councillor Bruni, I appreciate, respect the question. Uh I think it's a very legitimate question. And it was answered to me when I met with with the group and and heard what it would mean to to people that have lost somebody to to the opioid epidemic. Uh okay, I have next I have councillor Nero, then I have councillor Christian.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. I am supportive of the recommendation from staff. Uh my question, and I realize some of the details are yet to be worked out. But my question uh relates to the physical structure of this. Is this actually a wall or is it a monument or what kind of physical structure are we looking at?
Through you, Mister Mayor, to councillor Nero. It's a a frame. Uh we uh will be building either a wooden or steel frame, which will hold uh a wall, uh so to speak. It'll be a material on which is affixed a mural. So it's not going to be an enormous structure. Uh and it's uh going to be something that has uh a view which has enough room to uh have the uh stars to uh indicate those which whose uh which families wish to remember on the structure. But it's uh uh not going to be uh um uh an enormous monument, let's say.
Okay, but we don't have any size specifications yet or anything like that.
Through you, Mister Mayor, to councillor Nero, uh I would suggest uh four by eight to six by twelve is probably the range.
Okay, okay. And and is this an ongoing memorial where names could be added as as required?
Through you, Mister Mayor, to councillor Nero, yes. Uh while we would all wish that it didn't need to be that way. We do foresee it being that way.
And and my final question would be, are we looking at one physical structure? Or are we looking in the future the possibility of adding more structures?
Through you, Mister Mayor, to councillor Nero. At this time, we're just looking at one physical structure. As uh time goes on, we may have to assess it differently, but right now we're just looking at one physical structure.
Great, thank you. Thank you, welcome. Thank you, Mister Mayor.
Yeah, councillor Christian and councillor Shoemaker.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Uh I too wanna start off by saying, you know, I express my my sincere condolences and uh concern for the problems that we have in the city with substance abuse. I can only imagine what it's like to have to deal uh with losing a loved one to this this epidemic. So my heart goes out to you people. Most of my questions asked actually were answered. I I I I understand the purpose of wanting to do this. Uh I, um my question, I guess, was answered through the C A O White. I I thought that perhaps in principle, we could vote on the structure, but more formal design elements and descriptions and specifications would be provided at a later date. Um because as much as some will wanna support this, I think it's
I think it's fair for the greater community to know exactly what is going in. Not diminishing the fact that this is an important project to the presenters, definitely. So I guess I've had this question asked of me, and I don't want to downplay or diminish the, the ask here today. But I have friends who have asked, is this going to be limited to the opioid issue because there are other substance abuse problems? Obviously opioid addiction, this is very, very serious. But is it restricted to that? Because I have people in the community that have asked me and who are suffering in their own right with other types of substance abuse issues. So is it open to them as well?
So I'll, I'll, I'll go to Connie to answer that. Paul, just my understanding of the, of the intention, like the greatest degree of loss that we've suffered has resulted from the opioid epidemic. But I don't believe there's going to be a screening process. You want to memorialize someone in your family that you've lost, that you have to establish that that was that the source of the loss. So it's inclusive. Yeah, so but I'll, I'll, I'll have SOYA address that. Connie, go ahead.
Absolutely. It will be for everybody. Substance use disorder is from every substance use disorder. And everybody, everybody refers to the opiates because the opiate crisis as we're, that's when I started SOYA, when we had the, the Oxy era. But it's not just opiates, okay? We're losing people and it's from meth, like we have, okay, alcohol, that's another, that's another, okay, substance use, right? I mean, substance use disorder, it's anything that can take over and control you. There's no like magic bar, it's just for opiates, it's just for people that use meth, it's for everybody. There's no discrimination whatsoever.
Thank you very much. I appreciate those comments. And you're absolutely right. I mean, the loss of a loved one to this disease, this illness, this tragedy, whether it's through alcohol or opioid addiction, it, it stings every bit as much. So I appreciate those comments. My only, my only other comment to staff is that it would be nice to get a final version of what this looks like as we move forward. So if it's approved. Thank you.
Yeah, to that point, Council Christian, you know, we felt where we were at, we had to bring it to council to get approval. Because there was no point in moving farther down the road and sorting out the particulars of it if it didn't have council support. So, you know, we weren't bringing you something that was fully, you know, baked, so to speak.
Thank you.
So Council Shoemaker.
Thank you, Mister Mayor, and thanks to our presenters for, for their presentations, heartfelt and obviously emotional presentations to give. Through you, Mister Mayor, probably to C A O White. I, I support the need and the desire of the families to have a mural. I'm wondering if this location is, I mean, our, our boardwalk is often used for celebration. I mean Rotary Fest happens steps away from here. It's not a very solemn place at times. At other times, it can be peaceful and solemn, but I'm wondering if how we square those two desires, the desire to activate our boardwalk, which is, you know, what we, what we try and do most of the year versus desire to have solemn place for reflection.
Through you, Mister Mayor, to Counselor Shoemaker, yes, that was a challenge for us in finding the location. We do feel that the location we've chosen, which is some distance from the actual hub trail, and it's more in the landscaped and forested area adjoining the civic center, which isn't overly well-used right now. We do think that it strikes the balance between being accessible and being near with the waterfront, but also being separate enough that it can serve as a place of reflection.
Council Shoemaker, to the C A O's point, he, I think he's kind of found that balance well. It was important to the group that, that we didn't hide the memorial, right? That it was something that, you know, we acknowledged and was present. But it was hard to do that in such a way where you still had a spot where you could have some solemn time. I do know that right across from where the memorial is intended to be located, we have that, that tree, which I think we refer to as the, the Tree of Hope, which every year we light around Christmas time to, and people from our community come together. And it's in recognition of the people that they've lost during the year. So in, in, in some ways, this being located where it is, is, is very consistent with that, with that usage. And it is in an area that has some privacy. It isn't in an area where it's not hidden, but like it's not right on the, the hub trail. And so if you did want to have some solemn reflection, you, you would have, you would be able to achieve that, we think. And to be clear, we did, we did have a meeting at the site to make sure the site was consistent with what the group was trying to achieve.
Okay, well, that, that, that basically answers the question of the vetting of the site. So I appreciate the answer. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Council Hollingsworth next.
Thank you. Thank you, your worship. I want to say again, like everyone else is saying, Steph and Connie, thank you for coming to present. Everyone around this table has just said the same thing. We've all been impacted. I have a family member and there's two types of deaths unfortunately with this type of situation. The death physically where the individual is no longer with us, which is extremely emotional. And the second type of death where the person is still with us, but they're technically not with us anymore because of mental, because they're, they're refusing help. So there's two types of deaths associated with this. I want to make sure that we're all aware of that. So I'm glad Counselor Shoemaker mentioned location because we do have a celebration tonight. A few days ago, there was an announcement about the new residential withdrawal center, which is a wonderful positive step for this community when the community has been looking for something like this for a long, long time. I guess my question is, is there not opportunity to work with that particular group that's been working so hard on this for the last 15 years to highlight this, to highlight this wonderful wall idea, but with them? And to potentially work with the Suri Hospital and the foundation to basically raise the benchmark a little bit more? And so my question is, is, I have to agree, I don't know if this is the right location. Great idea, but maybe have you started to work with the group that's been working last 15 years on the new residential withdrawal center? And I don't know if Steph or Connie can answer that.
Well, staff really can't because, I mean, the group, you're asking SOYA why they didn't approach a different party? Like, why, they approached us, we, we began working with them to, to find a project that we can assist with that, that met their goal. So I think, you know, I, I think if you want to know why it's not being located somewhere else or why they aren't working with another group like Suri Hospital, I'd have to ask one of them to address that. Connie, Steph, do you feel like you're in a position to answer that question? Yeah, you're, you're.
Okay, thank you. Okay. I've been doing this, like I said, with SOYA for 10 years. I've had family members that have suffered from substance use disorder for a lot longer than that. And then that announcement that was made, it's a wonderful announcement. It is wonderful. That announcement, like, we've been waiting a long time for that, for that. And as well, on top of that, what we're looking at, I'm estimating probably another nine months to a year. I'm going to be completely like, I'm sorry, I get a little emotional on this. I go up to Suri Hospitals, I bring a lot of people to Suri Hospitals. Okay, I actually brought somebody to our detox when it was on Queen Street. And, and every made the news when our detox caught fire, when we had the fire. I actually brought somebody there and it had a note on the wall. Okay, we're closed, they were closed for four days, never made our news. So our, our detox got moved up to Suri Hospitals. Like, it's been there for a very long time. It was supposed to be temporary. I remember going to the old detox and, and I work, I, I have good relationships with the employees and with the workers. They were talking two years prior of moving the detox. And, you know, I'm glad, like, you know, we're getting like this additional funding. It's still going to take another nine months. And that's just for, like, you know, the withdrawal management with the treatment center. I'm watching too many people die right now. The numbers are escalating, okay? People are losing faith, okay? People are losing hope. Our city is, a lot of our cities are very well-educated. People don't understand municipal versus provincial and federal dollars. Okay, I thought it was a great idea to bring it to our city for the municipal part of it, because you guys can help us and we don't want to wait 10 years. Like, we need something now. We've been waiting a long time. And this one is coming to somebody's mental well-being? You have no idea what it means. Like, I'm sorry, I don't, I'm just like, it was a very good question. You got me good there. It's a very good question. I totally understand it. But we can't wait another 10 years. And when it comes to when you're, you're dealing with, you know, municipal dollars versus federal and provincial dollars, like, there's such a huge difference. It's, we're asking for something so little that will help out so many.
So thank you, Connie. Sandra, I'm just going to add to that a little bit. When, when SOYA approached us to, to do this, they, they originally approached us because they wanted to undertake a memorial. And they weren't asking us to construct anything, they were just asking us for use of our property. But, but I wasn't going to send them away to another group because this was something I saw that we could help with. There's a lot of confusion about municipality having a role in building and funding a withdrawal management center. And a lot of confusion as to why we haven't done that. If, if, if that was within our jurisdiction and our authority, we would have, I'm confident, been on it a lot earlier than it's happened. But it simply isn't. Like, we, we do not provide healthcare, we don't have the capacity to provide healthcare, we don't have the funding to provide healthcare, we don't have the legal jurisdiction to provide healthcare. So this was, you know, a, a group in our community that came to us with a project and a need, and I saw it as something that was in, within the municipal jurisdiction. Something that the municipality can actually support and help make happen. And that's, that's, so we saw it really as an opportunity to support our community. And we got to working with them really quickly on it. And because I think it is something the municipality can do. And I think it's, it's clear, it became clear to me, it's probably clear to you. It, it's important to a number of people's mental health, it's important to them feeling included in their community. It's important to them feeling that the city recognizes the magnitude of the loss. It's important for them to, to see the city supporting the community. And, and I shared all those sentiments and was happy to, to, to work with this group and the C A O. I defined something that we could as a municipal corporation.
And if I may say, your worship, as you know, I totally embrace this. I have a very close family member in this terrible journey where I have been emotional as well. So Connie, thank you for coming to us. And, and Steph, thank you for coming. It's, it's not easy to talk in front of such a large audience. So well done, your presentation. And your emotions are helped, are totally felt all across this table. So thank you. And it's just that we are turning the corner in this community and that's a celebration. And I think it's a good timing that you brought this to us, it's perfect. But we are turning that corner and that's the positive and let's keep that hope. And hope actually means toivo in Finnish. So hope, toivo means hope, and I'm glad Steph said hope. So thank you to both of you. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Gardi.
Thanks, Mister Mayor. Just a question of either Malcolm or Steph or Connie. The actual monument, will it have names affixed or will a star represent the passing of a, of a family? Family, family member.
Through you, Mister Mayor, to Counselor Gardi, it is intended that the stars will have names affixed. Certainly there will be the need to have a very, very careful process so that it's only names that families do want displayed on there. Families aren't always ready to acknowledge the, the situation which their loved one passed away. We're also looking at a, a method where people can leave a, a form of remembrance that's more anonymous. We will have more of that detail provided to you in a subsequent report. As the mayor noted, we felt it was important to get this far without going further and get these approvals, which we seek tonight.
Thanks, thanks, Malcolm. I appreciate that. I'm, I'm not sure if a map of where it was actually going to be situated ran in any of the stories about it in the media. I think if it, if it was, if, if it had, I think a lot of people would realize that it's along the waterfront. But as, as Mayor and, and the C A O mentioned, is in a more kind of a tranquil, quiet place. So to allay any whatever concerns there are in, in that regard. I think i- if we could even pull it up or send it out and the media could, could show that it would benefit, I think, in, in allay that concern.
It did run, it did run. Just hard to discern, like, looking at the overhead where it actually is.
Yeah, fair enough. You know, we, 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 we sit around this virtual or physical table sometimes and, and spend a lot more time, spend a lot less time approving things for a lot more money than $4,000. I am very supportive of this effort. I also know that, Mister Mayor, if there was a generous person out there who was civically minded and wanted to contribute to this, I'm sure Connie or Steph or your office would not dissuade anybody from contributing. But I'm in favor of it. Thanks, Mister Mayor.
Counselor Scott.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. It was mentioned about the crosses in Sudbury during this whole investigation and looking into the memorial. Did we look at what other cities are doing?
Through you, Miss.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead, Mister C A O, you can answer.
Through you, Mister Mayor, to Counselor Scott, yes. And that was an area where Lisa Bell and in the mayor's office really assisted us with some research. We did look at how these memorials are being handled across Canada. And certainly looked at the pros and cons of each style. And that's why through working with the group, we've ended up where we've, we end today.
Okay, so was this something other communities were doing, similar memorials? Instead of, I think a memorial makes way more sense than the crosses in the sense for permanence. It'll actually last. I think it's much, it's much classier, it's more tasteful than, than something that might wear over time. Was this one of the better solutions that we saw?
Through you, Mister Mayor, to Counselor Scott, this type of solution was probably more unique than what we did see. But certainly those issues were of a concern of us. We didn't want it to be an ad hoc memorial and we didn't, we wanted certainly something that could be seen and visited in all four seasons.
And just out of curiosity, what were some of the other examples that other cities were doing? So we know Sudbury's crosses, but what were some other things that we saw?
Through you, Mister Mayor, to Counselor Scott. The Canadian examples that we saw in different cities were a little more ad hoc and grassroots level developed. There are some very significant memorials that we found in the United States. Certainly ones that are, you know, very akin to monuments and things like that for people to visit. We felt what we've arrived at through our discussions with the group is something that's very fitting for Susanne Marie.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so that, that's everybody on my list. Counselor Bruni, you had a follow-up question?
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Thank you for allowing me to ask one more question.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, thank you for allowing me to ask one more question or a comment. Uh, and I'd like to thank Connie and Stephanie for clear, um, clarifying uh a question by councillor Christian when he said, is it just strictly for opiate users? But it's not, it's for all addictions, and I'm correct on that. I, I guess my question now goes to Mr. White. We should be looking at some of the private sectors if they can provide funding to help us. Because four thousand dollars might not do it. Um, but I'm sure there's three or four businesses in town that would probably help out in this uh in this project. Thank you very much.
Okay, so council, it's everybody on my list. Uh, the motion's been read. We are uh, need to get to, to planning. So I'm gonna call a vote on it. Before I do, I just wanna thank uh both Steph and Connie for participating tonight. And I also want to recognize Frank Heather, de- had, uh, rest, recognize and thank Heather Dukes and Lisa Foga for uh their contribution. Those are the four uh main people that worked with us, but I know there's a whole other group in the background that they, they worked with and consulted with. So I wanna thank all of them uh for their contributions to this. Uh, council, you have uh the, the e-scribe in front of you, but we'll call a vote all in favor. Uh, I think that was unanimous. Any opposed? So, carried, passed unanimously. Connie, Steph will be in touch and we'll move forward together and we'll continue to work on this project. Thank you. Um, clerk, we have to go to the planning agenda because it is five thirty-seven, so we're a bit late to that. So we'll go to agenda item seven.
Agenda item seven point seven point one is application A ten twenty-one Z O P thirteen oh six People's Road, Ontario Aboriginal Housing. And we have uh on the call, uh, Mark Laporte, lead presenter. Uh, Wanda Chorney, Kathy, Connor and Josh La Liebra. On behalf of the applicant.
Okay, so uh before we get to you, Mr. Laporte, welcome to council. I'm gonna go to Mr. McConnell and ask Mr. McConnell to uh give us a little pre-seen, then we'll come to you, we'll come to your group. Mr. McConnell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, this property is the former Canadian Martyrs' School property. It has frontage on both People's Road and um Greenfield Drive. The request is to rezone to permit a fifty-three unit townhouse development. Uh, and I would like to bring to council's attention, that's a major project, fifty-three units. But uh, in this case, the property itself is more than nine acres in size. Which means the overall density is slightly less than six units per acre, which is a typical current modern single-family subdivision. Uh, so the density overall is, is not much. This application is being recommended by staff. And as the clerk pointed out, I believe Mr. Laporte is taking the lead on this from the uh, from the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. McConnell. Mr. Laporte, we welcome you to council. You have Kathy with you and Josh, I think it is. And we welcome y'all. So, Mr. Laporte, if you'd like to add anything to uh, uh, to the applicant's presentation here, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Uh, I represent Ontario Aboriginal Housing Support Services Corporation. Uh, I can address any questions council may have. Um, Mr. McConnell had briefly described the nature of the application. It, it is a rather low-density uh type of development. Um, the units proposed are single-story slab-on-grade. Uh, and importantly, uh, the units are uh affordable. Um, which we know, and you know, council ought to recognize, there is a need and desire for affordable units in the city. And um, the units are compatible with the um existing area, the surrounding neighborhood. Uh, and as I mentioned, the density is rather uh low compared to the size of the uh, of the property itself. And so if there are any uh questions that either I or my client or consulting engineer may be able to address, I'd be happy to, to address those at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Laporte. So we'll, we'll get into questions. Before I do, I just wanna ask the clerk. Um, clerk, do we have anybody registered to speak against the application?
Mayor, we don't have anybody registered to speak against. We ha- did receive uh considerable correspondence today that has been um circulated to council on the addendum, but nobody has registered to speak against it.
Okay, okay. So, uh, council, do you have questions of Mr. Laporte? So we're gonna start councillor Bruni, then councillor Shoemaker, then councillor Nero.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Um. I, I think I'll direct my questions right now to Mr. McConnell, if that's okay.
Yeah, that's fine.
Thank you very much. Uh, Mr. McConnell, with this new development, uh, the property is higher than the residents um in the area. And there has been always severe flooding issues in that area there. So, I, I'm asking you, uh, my first question is, where will all the water go? With this development, how are those neighbors gonna be protected with uh, with flooding issues?
Through you, Mr. Mayor to councillor Bruni, um, you're quite correct. Uh, the city is well aware that there is a drainage problem in that area. This is not new. This, this is an existing problem. The city currently has an environmental assessment underway to uh, to deal with that matter. Uh, I'm gonna ask, I see that Don Elliott is also on the line, and I think he's more familiar with the, the status of that report than I am. But I think it is important to remember that uh, A, there is a problem in the area. Uh, and B, as a result of this development, which will include a stormwater management plan and a stormwater management pond, the existing situation will not get worse. Uh, and we are, we are working on what is a better solution to in, improve drainage in that area. Mr. Mayor, if I may, I'm just wondering if Mr. Elliott has some additional comments he might want to uh, to add on that.
You may.
Mr. Mayor to councillor Bruni, as you are aware, there is a environmental assessment underway for, to assess the drainage. This whole, this whole catchment area. Uh, it's a large area. This development is actually a very small component of that area. So we think the additional flow that this will generate can be managed on-site, is that, or that is the way these developments are, are mandated to uh develop these days. They have to, they can't increase the amount of flow off, off of them. But in the larger context, there may be some uh locations in this area that are suitable for a stormwater management pond. And we'll, we'll see if that is the outcome of the environmental assessment that we kind of expect it, it will be. But we don't know until the environmental assessment is complete.
So, Mr. Elliott, the, the specific answer to the question is that you, you would require that this, that the water is managed on the development itself as opposed to off-flow onto other properties?
Mr. Mayor, the uh, the way we worded it is this way. The, the uh, the amount of flow that flows off the property can't, the rate of flow can't be increased. So whatever flow comes off the property now, that rate of flow can't be increased because of this development.
Councillor Bruni?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um. So, I guess, uh, the other que- oh, another question. Uh, the ditches across from the present townhouses, will those ditches be repaired? There, there are damage to those ditches that the water's not flowing correctly. Uh, will, will those ditches be repaired? And, and these are some of the questions or concerns that uh, and the only reason why I got involved was originally that was part of the ward I represented. And I've, I've had a good dialogue with some of the neighbors in, in the past year, so um, they did call me regarding this, so. And these are some of the questions that they're not sure of the answer. So I, I'd like to make it public that uh, uh, city staff or engineering, et cetera, can answer these.
Mr. Mayor to councillor Bruni, there, we are aware that of some operational issues with some of the drainage in the immediate area of the uh, of the first portion of this development. And yes, that is being dealt with under the site plan uh control agreement that is on-site. Uh, so it's kind of a separate issue from this, from this development.
Okay, um. So, regarding the People's Road ditches, is, is there gonna be? Will, will there be ditches? Because I'm looking at the map right now. Uh, is that an entrance off People's Road?
If I may, Mr. Mayor, yes, I can confirm that will be an entrance off People's Road.
So covert will be installed, coverts would be installed there under the road? For the water to flow?
I don't know if we have the, the details of the design on this at this point.
Okay. Um. All right, fair enough then. Um. Will the new revisions of the buildings be uh presented for the residents in the area? Uh, would there be another townhouse uh meeting, if possible? Because the plans are not finalized yet, correct?
Um, Mr. Mayor, again, if I may, the um, um, I think the site plan is finalized. I don't expect that to change. The details of the development as to exactly what the buildings look like, I don't know if, if that is known yet. Uh, and that would, uh, that would be a question better asked to the applicant. Uh, if they are planning to have any further discussions with the neighbors uh prior to beginning construction. I can confirm that the buildings are only one-story buildings, so.
Right, okay. And my last question is regarding, will there be a fence uh on the south side? Or especially for the lots uh, like one seventy-three? And I can't see because it's too small. Uh, right there, um, one, one eighty-seven, one eighty-nine up to two oh three. Uh, two oh seven, will there be a, a fence installed? Or how would the separation appear? Would there be trees? Uh? Would there be a burn?
Uh, again, if I may, uh, Mayor Provenzano to councillor Bruni, there is no zoning bylaw requirement to put a fence up. Uh, usually what we do do, and there is some, there is some trees in there now, and the applicants have indicated that they're willing to uh add to the landscaping. Uh, usually what we do is we uh encourage the applicants to meet with the neighbors. Because not all neighbors will want a fence, and some neighbors already have a fence. And those are the kinds of things that are, are best dealt with between the two parties. Uh, certainly we can require a fence, but that is not a requirement of the zoning bylaw now. And not everyone wants a fence, depending on the circumstances.
And just a final comment, the main cons- well, one of the main concerns, and I'm sure the other, the councillors in that ward will present other issues, but the main concern is that property, the buildings will be approximately two feet higher. They're worried that there's, the water flow will be restricted. They're worried about uh increased flooding issues, backyards and in some basements. And those are their serious concerns. And I, I'm hoping city staff will deal with all the concerns that, that uh these residents have. And also the developer. Um, I hope they have a good uh, uh, communication uh, to the residents in the area that are, that are being affected with this development. They're not opposed of the development. They're just worried about the, the major flooding issues that have occurred before. And will be, will they be more constant? Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Bruni. I think I read off the list to begin with. It was councillor Bruni, Shoemaker, Nero. So Shoemaker, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councillor Bruni asked most of what I was gonna ask, but uh, through you, it either Don McConnell or Don Elliott. I know that pre-development uh or post-development flows of water off-site can't exceed pre-development flows. Uh, but that doesn't necessarily mean that there won't be any change in impact on where the water flows and whether it affects neighboring properties. Uh, am I correct about that?
Uh, Mr. Mayor to councillor Shoemaker, I think in this case, the outlets, the storm outlets are existing. The water would be picked up from this development into existing sewers and existing drainage courses. So, the, the post, you're correct, the post-development flow does not exceed the pre-development. There may be more water, but the rate at which it comes off the property won't be increased. So the out, the outlets are there now. It's not uh, most of the development is downstream is complete.
Right, but I, I'll, I'll use simple numbers. If ten gallons of water is flowing off this property now. Um, and, and it's flowing into outlets or wherever it's flowing to. If you harden some of the surfaces and build roof lines and, and asphalt, that ten gallons of water may be displaced and, and go elsewhere. It's not gonna become eleven gallons, but it, it, it may change where the water flows.
Mr. Mayor, councillor Shoemaker, I think, again, uh, the water can be rerouted on-site, but I believe the, oh, there may be some, uh, I suppose I could agree with you. When you regrade things and pave things, there could be some uh additional water heading out to People's Road, for example. But the uh, generally speaking, the rate that the wa- there may be an increase in water runoff from this property. But the rate at which it leaves the property cannot change. That's the way the design is. So there's no, uh, the theory is that there's no downstream impacts if it's done properly.
Okay, and I guess the, the done properly matters a lot to the neighbors in the area. I know, I, I, I mean, you, you've mentioned it, that Mr. McConnell's mentioned it, there's an environmental assessment going on uh for the area. The problem with environmental assessments, as councillor Dufores has been fighting for the last number of years, is you get these recommendations and then it's expensive to implement the fix. So, you know, the fixes are often six, seven, eight, nine years down the road. So, if we've got the ability to identify something that could help, even if it may not be the only solution, but something that could help, like an increased size of stormwater management pond here. I think it's incumbent that we do it during the development phase, when money is being spent uh anyways, uh, to try and mitigate uh, those effects off-site. I, I, I'll, I'll say outright, I support the development. Uh, but I know that, that there are uh, uh, flooding issues in the area. And, and if we're going to change where water's flowing here, or it's gonna be redirected, uh, I think there is not, there is going to be impacts on other properties. And, and I think we should do everything we can at this point during the development stage to, to mitigate that. And, and I leave it to you and, and the developers' engineer how best to do that. But I, I, I don't want, I want to see uh us making the situation better for everybody, not worse for some people.
Thank you, councillor Shoemaker. Councillor Nero?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And just, my question is gonna take the previous discussions a little further. It's about external drainage as well. Uh, Mr. Elliott, I, I think, I believe you said the rate of flow from the property can't be increased with development. But if a large enough um stormwater management pond wo- was built, would the flow possibly be decreased?
Mr. Mayor to councillor Nero, absolutely, yes. If a, if this stormwater management pond on-site was overdesigned, you could reduce the rate of flow uh below pre-development uh, pre-development flows.
So, so, Mr. Elliott, on, under Engineering Services on page six of the report, uh, I believe it says, engineering would be interested in further discussion with the applicant about the potential for developing a city-owned and maintained stormwater management pond on the subject property. Is this something that could be made a condition of this rezoning? Or is this something that the applicant um would have to agree to? And if there's no agreement, then it just doesn't happen? Mr. Mayor, that's a planning question more than, but go ahead.
Mr. Mayor to councillor Nero, that would be something maybe for the planning division to uh you're essentially be, you're, you're asking the developer to look after a portion of the city's drainage issue in the area. And there would, obviously, we would have to con- or, or perhaps would have to con- contribute to that. It may be a good location for additional stormwater management. There may be, there are likely other locations as well. The solution in this whole drainage area may be multiple locations of small uh facilities that, that store water and pace the flow downstream. This may be one of those locations. And I think that's why staff put that comment in there, was uh, it, it may be a suitable place to store uh additional water.
Okay, um, Mr. Mayor, can we get Mr. McConnell to, to add into that? Mr. Mayor, can we get Mr. McConnell to, to add into that?
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. McConnell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To Council Nero, it would be unusual for us to make as a condition of development that the developer provide a, a feature or construct a feature which would solve a longstanding problem that the city is aware of. Rather than making that a condition of approval, I think the better way to do that is for us to advance with our environmental assessment as quickly as possible. And to meet with the applicants now to see what arrangements can be made. This would require changes to their plans. That's not necessarily a bad thing. It could often, these kind of things can often be done. As you say, it's simply the size of the stormwater management pond without major disruption to their plans. But I think those are the sort of things that are best handled through face-to-face negotiations between the city and the applicant with their consulting engineer and our engineers on board.
Understood. Thank you for that. And I guess, just in closing, so if I understand correctly, we can as the Planning Department regulate or ask through the, through the planning process that stormwater management be on-site based on what the flow is off that property, but not oversized to fix a condition that's already happening in that area.
Mr. Mayor, Council Nero is correct, and we do that as a condition of site plan approval for all projects. Where we require a storm management water, stormwater management plans. And the, the applicant, the developer is responsible for the cost of constructing those facilities to make sure that the problems do not get worse. Our, our discussions would be, can we make them better?
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Hilsinger, and then Dufour, and then Vezo Allen.
Thank you. I just have a quick comment. I think that in speaking to one of the residents in particular, I understand that city staff attended at their home along with Ms. Connor, and that resident felt very good that, that she was being listened to, and, and these concerns which Council Bruni and Nero and Shoemaker have expressed, and I'm not going to repeat them, are being listened to and, and heard. They're excited about the development. I'm excited about the development. But thank you to staff for reaching out and listening, and hopefully, you know, the further what you're hearing now is, is going to help put the best plan together and, and have a great new neighborhood. Thanks.
Great. Thank you very much, Counselor Hilsinger. Counselor Dufour.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Does staff have an idea of when the proposed EA for the stormwater in this area will be, will be available for residents?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Elliott, go ahead.
Yeah, Mr. Merit to Council Dufour, it's underway. The pandemic obviously has slowed several of these EAs down, but it's underway now. And I don't know whether it'll be done this fall, but we'll see.
Okay, thanks. I, I, I trust that Steph is following the procedures to, to take into the consideration the EA and stormwater management here. Like Counselor Hilsinger, I'm also very excited to see this development go forward. I think it's a really positive sign for our community to see affordable units spread throughout the city. I think that Ontario Aboriginal Housing Services has been a tremendous partner to the DSAB and very happy to support their project here. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Council Dufour, Council Vezo Allen.
Thank you. Two very quick questions, probably for either Ms. Connor or possibly Mr. McConnell. In terms of the green space, and that's been some of the comments, what is going to be sort of the buffer when you're putting up the units? Is there going to be trees so that there's a buffer with the existing neighborhood? Is it going to be fenced yards? So just so we have some sort of idea of how the green space is going to be respected and affected in, for the neighbors?
I'll, Mr. Mayor, I'll let Ms. Connor go first, and then I can certainly fill in after that.
Okay, no problem. Ms. Connor, you're gonna address that question?
Yes, thank you very much for the time. Our plans, as always, when we develop anywhere in Ontario, we want our housing and our tenants to be, have a nice place to live as well, and taking the neighborhood into consideration. So our intent is to leave a buffer zone of trees in between our development and where we're going as possibly can.
Do you have any?
Oh, sorry.
Sorry. Also, is there any possibility for community garden, playground equipment, that sort of thing? As Mr. McConnell was saying, there is quite a a lot of acreage comparable to what you probably require for the 53 units.
Correct. There is a consideration for that. We haven't finalized all of those details yet, but absolutely, there is a consideration.
Wonderful.
We are community partners. We support the community gardens behind our residential development on McNabb Street as well. You know, we provide the water and, and help them maintain the garden as well, so.
Thank you, Ms. Connor. Counselor Vezo Allen, did you have anything else?
The only other one was my accessibility hat on. Just wondering how many accessibility barrier-free units are going to be available within the unit, the 53 units?
We haven't submitted all of our final designs, but we'll do at, at least a minimum of 20% or more of accessible, and we make them all universal design regardless. And that's one of the reasons why we're building slab-on-grade as well, too. So that doesn't matter if you're a family member, your grandma, if somebody wants to come and visit, they can still access your home. But yes, some of the units will be fully accessible as well, too.
That's a wonderful percentage, Ms. Connor. Thank you so much, and very
Proud of that as well, too.
Thanks.
Counsel Gardi.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, thank you. The concerns that have been raised, you know, are, are are substantial ones. I've heard about this as well from some neighbors that live just south, south of, of this residence. They live just south of this proposed development. That being said, I'm pretty confident that city staff working with, with Ms. Connor and her team will do what they need to mitigate what, what, what's been happening. You know, for, for a develop, for a developer who is so conscious of developing affordable housing, I doubt what they would want to do is to create, create problems for, for, for those who, who have dwellings just, just south of this. Which could make their, their own homes less affordable through multiple insurance claims that many of them have, have put forward over the course of the last number of years, so. I'm confident that between city staff and Ms. Connor and her team, that they'll come up with a development that isn't, that is very, you know, welcoming. Aesthetically pleasing, but also does not add any, any more challenges to some people who've been really challenged below the hill there. Thank you.
Counsel, do we have any other comments or questions from councillors? We have nobody registered to speak against it. You have communications that are on your agenda. Before we, we call the vote on it, I'd just like to express my own support for it. The Ontario Aboriginal Housing Authority Corporation is, is a great community partner. And it's always been great to work with you and your team, Kathy. I think this is an exciting development. I think the community could use these 53 units. I'm very happy to see the 53 units. And I have confidence that city staff will work cooperatively with you to develop this, and also keeping in mind making sure they're doing what they need to do to, to deal with and address resident concerns and the, the water quality. Those are the water issues that may arise as a result of it. So I think it's a great development, and I really appreciate your organization bringing the development to our council. I don't think we have any more questions or comments, council, so we, Madam Clerk, I recall you, you read the motion, did you not?
I have not read the motion. I will read it now.
Go ahead.
I have a motion by councillors Bruni and Shoemaker, resolved that the report of the senior planner dated May 31, 2021, concerning application A1021Z OPB received, and that council approve official plan amendment 233 and redesignate the subject property from rural area to residential on Landview Schedule C of the official plan, and that council rezone the subject property from rural area zone to low-density residential zone with a special exception to reduce the required frontage from 20 meters to 16 meters. And that council deems the property subject to site plan control, and that the legal department be requested to prepare the necessary bylaws to effect the same. And the vote is open.
So, all in favor, council? The application is approved. You'll pass your votes in these scribments to report. Thank you for your time tonight. Kathy, Josh, thank you for attending, and congratulations on your approval. We look forward to working with you on this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, council.
Item 7.7.2, application A1121Z177 Brock Street, the Sault Ste. Marie Housing Corporation. We have Jeff Barbin as lead presenter on the call, as well as Liza Chakovsky from Social Services and David Ellis also on behalf of the applicant. And we have no one registered to speak either in favor or against the application.
Okay, so before we get to the applicant, Mr. McConnell, I'm gonna ask you to speak to the matter and just give everybody a summary of what's, what is happening here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The District Social Services Agency or Local Board is in, in the process of, beginning the process to construct a new office building on the corner of Brock and Albert Street. To facilitate that, they will be using the existing property. They will also be using the former Barton Kiteley Home property, both of which are already zoned central business, so they're good to go there. They have acquired what was a house, which was the next north property between the Barton and kind of Funeral Home and the Laneway on Brock Street, and that property is the subject of tonight's application. The request is to rezone that property to central commercial to merge it in effect with the rest of the property that they already own to facilitate construction of their new office building. It is recommended for approval, and as our clerk mentioned, Mr. Barbin is on the line on behalf of the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. McConnell. Mr. Barbin, did you have any representations that you wanted to make in support of this application?
We, I'm trying to see if Eric Tech is on, on the call as well. I don't see if David Ellis is on. Well, I'll, I'll continue.
I believe that he is in the meeting.
Okay, I can't see him on here.
He's, he's just connecting now, so if you wanna, I show him, he's connecting on my screen.
Okay, I'll, I'll proceed. We've gone through the stages of meeting with the Dart Committee to, for the proposed site plan for initial approval and to cover any issues that may be with the site. In the development phase, this one piece of property we purchased to give additional room and buffer between the building and the neighboring households. With the plan in originally going with the Ontario Works Building at the end of the lease for the current occupant to be removed, and that building will leave the site with additional parking being utilized for that space.
Okay, did you have anything else, Mr. Barbin?
Nope, that's everything to add.
Okay, so council, do you have any questions of either our planning director or Mr. Barbin on behalf of the ESA? Madam Clerk, you indicated that there was nobody that registered to speak in opposition to the application.
I have, correct.
Okay, and so why don't you, I don't see any questions from council. Why don't you read the motion there?
I have a motion by councillors Bruni and Hilsinger, resolved that the report of the planner dated May 31, 2021, concerning rezoning application A1121Z be received, and that council rezone 177 Brock Street from commercial transitional zone to central commercial zone, and that the legal department be requested to prepare the necessary bylaw to effect the same.
All in favor? The application is approved. Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Congratulations, and we look forward to working with you as we, as we move forward on this project.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. A good evening.
Take care, Jeff. Nice seeing you. Okay, so we will, I think Madam Clerk then move on to
That would take us to consent, and it was requested that Agenda Item 6.5 be accepted from consent.
6.5 is the RFQ Annual Maintenance and Subscription Fee Dynamic GP, so we'll pull that. So we are now on consent agenda. I think Counsel Hollingsworth, you, you had something you wanted pulled from consent? What did you want pulled?
Yes. I liked 6.21, which is the shopping cart topic to be pulled, please.
Okay, so we'll pull 6.21 from consent also. You have that, Madam Clerk, recorded? So 6.5 and 6.21 are withdrawn from consent. We'll deal with those separately? Okay, so matters on the consent agenda. Counsel Nero, I saw your hand up there first. Did you want to go?
I'll pass right now. I was with 6.21, but it's been pulled.
Okay, so then I see Counsel Vezo Allen's hand up, so we'll go to Counsel Vezo Allen.
I just have two items, Mr. Mayor. Through you, Mr. Mayor, to, this would be Mr. Ver actually on 6.1.
Go ahead.
For the Community Development Fund and Cultural Vitality, the proposal is to bring it upward to $500,000 for bigger projects. Mr. Ver, can you give an idea as to what you would consider a larger project and how that would be allocated if it, if it goes for approval?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Vezo Allen. Really, tonight, I think the, the limit was set to set a limit for the reserve from that cultural fund. So we don't have a specific project in mind for that. But what we did want to do is if any funds are spent, they would be able to accumulate in the reserve and could be applied to a larger project, but at this time, we don't have any designs on what that larger project may be.
Okay, could it be divided up so not just necessarily one project for 500,000 if there was a few that were of smaller amounts? Would that be feasible?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counsel Vezo Allen. Absolutely, that is correct.
Okay, thank you. I have nothing else on 6.1.
Anybody else on 6.1? Okay, what's your next issue, Counsel Vezo? What's your next matter on the consent agenda?
Lots of issues. 6.14, the Tourism Development Fund, and to Mr. Anderson. Hi, Travis. In the application, one of the questions or criteria that gains points is the amount of overnight stays and visitor spends. So I think, and I'm asking if there's a possibility, especially because we are not traveling, we're not seeing a lot of overnight stays, how other, another way to award merit to an application? Has that been considered during what we're probably going to be seeing as a much different tourism year?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counsel Vezo Allen. So just to be clear, there, there are two streams. So there's a product development stream, festivals and event stream.
Yeah.
Obviously, your, your concern and consideration is with respect to the festivals and event stream?
Yeah.
You know, there's, I guess, a number of criteria that we're looking at in terms of eligibility, including marketing and promotion for the community. You know, favorable press on a, on a national and provincial scale. I would say that, you know, based on the fact that it's approved by council, we would be opening up this application process. You know, effective in June of this year. The hope would be that we would get applications that are for festivals and events that are later in the year with, you know, cautious optimism that with the vaccine rollout, that later this year, we will see the ability to host some events. We felt it very important to distinguish ourselves from the arts and culture funding, so there was a clear criteria and a clear desire to be able to demonstrate that we were bringing in visitors to the community, both for the economic benefit of the hospitality sector, but also as a, a means to replenish our municipal accommodation tax which goes directly into tourism, marketing and promotion and product development.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Anderson. So you anticipate that there would be applications probably more moving forward into next year?
That, that's correct. For this stream, that's correct.
Okay, thank you. I have nothing else, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Anybody else on 6.14? Seeing none? Anybody else have matters in the consent agenda? Counsel Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question regarding 6.13 Community Pass Pilot. So through you, Mr. Mayor, to Mr. Lamming. So it is mentioned in So it is mentioned in here that they're, they're following the, I think it's pronounced PIPADA laws around privacy and healthcare and data. And it also mentions in the presentation on behalf of Community Pass that they are using Canadian servers. So I do have one question, and that's in regards to their website. So it appears that you can log in on communitypass.ca, and I did a who is on their domain, and it's actually hosted in the US. Is this a concern when it comes to the PIPADA laws? That their main website, which you can log into, is actually hosted in the US?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Scott. What we were reassured through with Community Pass is totally voluntary, and with respect to this, the data has been assured not to be, to be sold or shared. It is, will be strictly with my community health network group and used totally for this purpose. So having that served stated there wasn't a major concern. We did share this data with our IT department to review, as well as our HR department and our legal department to review the data sharing agreement, along with the memorandum of understanding, and they were comfortable with, with the, the data contained within each of those agreements.
Okay, so we're not concerned then that you can log in on the Community Pass website, which is actually being hosted in the United States?
Not at this point.
Okay, that was my only question on the matter.
Yes, so appreciate you identifying that matter. I just want to recognize this, this initiative arose out of some doctors in our community developing this app, and really, the, the intention is also to, to help with contact tracing and maybe help with public help with contact tracing. So just recognize the efforts of, of that team of doctors in doing this and, and their innovation. And so thank you to city staff. They reached out to city staff to, to see if we would support this project, and they could kind of promote it through this channel. And I just want to thank city staff for working with them on that. Anybody else on 6.13? On 6.13, no? Counselor Scott, do you have anything else?
No, not that I can think of right now. I don't think I have anything else on my list.
Okay, Counsel, do you four?
Yes, 6.25, Mr. Mayor. I, I didn't have any specific questions about it, but I wanted to bring it to our community's attention. I know that myself and Lisa, we received several communications from community members as we needed to pass basically what looked like affordable housing waivers at several of our, our past rezonings. And I just want to bring the community's attention to the report that planning has done that really does a good job succinctly explaining why those waivers were necessary. And they're asking for our permission tonight to enter into the public consultation phase of changing that part of our official plan, which is something I support, and I hope some of the community members who contacted us about these waivers will be able to take some time and, and learn a little more about what the role of the municipality is, in fact, in, in helping to provide affordable housing in our community. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else on 6.25? Counsel, do you have any other matters on the consent agenda? Before we move on, I want to address 6.9. I just want to recognize the team, team at the Edmonton Clerk site and the good work that they, they do. This was on last year, and I meant to make comments when it was on last year, and I missed it, and I didn't want to do that again. So I just want to thank the, the team there for really doing great work. It's, it's a great site, and there's lots of good work done there, and it's an awesome team. So thank you to them for their work. We have a bit of an unusual situation on consent. If, I'm just going to direct Council's attention to 6.20, the resurfacing program. There is a item in the resurfacing program that, that relates to traffic calming on one specific street. And there was a petition that was, was circulated and brought to council on this issue. And generally speaking, when a report comes back that results from a petition, we would let someone who was part of the petition speak to it. A, a report didn't come back from that petition, but what staff did was staff rolled up part of, of, of that issue into this resurfacing program report. And we did have a request from a community member to speak to that specific issue. And the CEO and the clerk thought it advisable to approve that request so that the, the gentleman is on the line, and he's been waiting to speak. So I am going to ask the clerk to let him into the meeting, and he can address the issue that he would like to address. And it relates to Foxborough Trail. Okay, so I think, yeah, you're, you're, Simone?
Yes, good evening, everyone.
Good evening, sir.
Okay, my name is Simone Bai, and I'm the residence of Foxborough Trail that requested the traffic calming measures and work on the petition. And I have a couple of questions. The first for traffic engineers related to the speed tables. I'd like to know if the traffic engineers are willing to involve residents when it comes to decide on how many speed table have to be installed and where. I believe that the residents know better than anyone where the safety concerns are on Foxborough Trail, and we can help engineers in making the most effective decision. So I know that there are engineers recommended two speed tables, but for comparison, McGregor, which is 500 meters long and a 50 kilometers an hour speed limit, has two. Versus Foxborough Trail, which is 800 meter long, at 40 kilometers an hour limit, and it has the same, and, and, you know, the recommendation for the same amount of speed limit. So I'd like to know where this number comes from, and whether engineers are willing to install more than two speed tables.
So, Mr. Elliott, I'm going to ask you to address that question.
Mr. Mayor, it may be appropriate to do three speed tables on this road. We looked into the spacing and basically the design criteria that comes with it. So we would propose, we, we have no problem meeting with the residents if that's helpful. We can't compromise any engineering standard or guideline that were given, but we can talk to them about it. Typically, there, if there were two, they'd be spaced at the third points. If there are three, they'd be, they spaced at the, maybe around the quarter points, but with respect to intersections, et cetera. So we're happy to speak to them, and yes, we are open to three if that's what the design criteria suggests. So if that's helpful.
That is. So to the answer to the first question, sir, staff would be willing to meet with you about this.
Awesome. My second question is for Councilors Schumacher and Hilsinger, and is related to the speed limit of 30 kilometers an hour. I submitted a request for a speed limit change from 40 to 30 in Foxborough Trail, together with my traffic calming request, and I never heard a clear answer from the city. So some Ontario city has transitioning from a 40 kilometers an hour to 30 speed limit in local residential. And also, scientific research reported that 30 kilometers an hour is a safe speed limit where all motorized vehicles, pedestrians and bicycles can share the street safely. Can a 30 kilometers an hour limit be implemented in Foxborough? It will reduce the speed. It will enable police to issue tickets to those who are speeding 50 and above and ensure safety to a Baltimore user. So I'd like to know from, from you guys whether a 30 kilometers an hour speed limit can be implemented? If, if not, why?
Sir, I'm, I'm going to, to kind of answer that question and direct it to staff. City council takes advice on, on traffic design, engineering and speed from city staff, and it has a responsibility to, to do that because there are a lot of legal issues that could arise from traffic. So, I mean, speed limits are recommendations of staff, and certainly they can be changed, and they, to answer your question, they can be changed, and they can be addressed, adjusted. But we rely on our, our, our engineering staff and our, our transportation staff to give us their best advice in that regard. I, I don't think you'd have a city council disrupt a city council without the substantive information they would require from staff to just randomly change speed limits in one neighborhood as opposed to another. But Dawn, maybe you could give some kind of direction and, and clarity on, on staff's role and council's role on setting speed limits and how that process works.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, we, we can look at it. I know this has been looked at very recently. This is a school zone, and, and some school zones have been set to 40 kilometers per hour. So that's the reason it's 40 now, and I think the speed tables will likely do a lot for traffic calming in this location. But I'd like to, I'd refer the 30 kilometer an hour speed limit question back to staff. I, I'd need more, more information on that.
Miss, if I can contribute some to this discussion?
Sure.
Miss, I, I did receive outreach from Simone on this issue, and Mr. Rumiel, our traffic engineer, was copied on it, and he responded in, in an email that there are no streets in the city that are less than 40 kilometers an hour. That's the lowest speed in our city. So if there was going to be a look at changing any of the speed limits in the municipality to less than 40, it would require a review, I think, of the, of the speed situation in the Sioux as a whole, rather than one specific, you know, these one-off situations. So that was his response on, in March.
Okay, thank you, Counsel Schumacher. Okay, sir, do you have any other representations you'd like to make?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, I think that is it for the consent agenda, and I think you can, with the exception of 6.9 and 6, no, what was excepted?
Yeah, I, I'll read the motion. It's accepting 6.5 and 6.21. The motion by Councilors Burney and Hilsinger resolved that all the items listed under date May 31, 2021, Agenda Item 6, Consent Agenda, save and accept Agenda Items 6.5 and 6.21 be approved as recommended.
All in favor? Carried. Okay, so that brings us to 6.5 and then 6.21. So 6.5, Counsel Schumacher?
Do you want me to read the motion for 6.5 first, or?
Sure, go ahead.
The motion by Councilors Nero and Hilsinger resolved that the report of the manager of purchasing dated May 31, 2021, concerning RFQ Annual Maintenance and Subscription Fees Dynamics GP be received, and that the quotation submitted by Central Square Canada Software, Inc. for Dynamics GP Maintenance and Subscription Fees for the one-year period commencing May 31, 2021 at the quoted cost of $93,517.74 plus HSD be approved on a sole source basis.
Counsel Schumacher, you asked this be pulled? Go ahead.
Sorry about that. Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm, I'm somewhat confused from the report, to be honest, but through you, probably to, is Mr. Cachemilio here? Yes, to Mr. Cachemilio. We're, we're seeking to sole source this. Could we not go out for an RFP? Or, or what's the issue with, I mean, 5% increase year over year seems quite high on a sole sourced basis. So is it that there were no responses? Or, or what was the situation? Can you expand a little bit?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Schumacher. Central Square provides the city with a dynamic municipal ERP solution, which is basically a customization of Microsoft Dynamics GP ERP system. And it also has an added city tax module that's been developed for Ontario municipalities. The solution has also been customized for the city, and it has integrated points that integrate with our, our city payroll system, our public works, work tech, work management system. So basically, to go to try to, you know, find an additional solution would require that we would have to look at the whole ERP solution. All, and something that would be challenging at this point.
Okay, thanks. I appreciate that. How, I mean, we're, we're going to have this software, it seems to me, like for quite some time. So we, we can't be stuck with one provider. I mean, if they know we're stuck with one provider, next year will be 10% rather than 5%, and the year after that, 15%. So what do we do?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Schumacher. It, it is a highly customizable system that's for Ontario municipalities, and it is one of the major players that's out there for Ontario municipalities. They have been reasonable with the yearly maintenance agreements. I foresee that they would jump to that significant year to year. But once again, it would, we would have to replace our entire ERP system over and RFP a new
Right, okay, well, okay. It, it's, it's a, it's an awkward position for us to be asked to be put in, given that they're, they're basically the only service provider unless we want to change our whole system that they, they really caning. I mean, I suppose if they increased it 10 or 15%, we'd go over an RFP to replace the whole system would be the solution, is what you're telling me.
Through, through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Schumacher. That would be the case if there was significant increase of maintenance subscriptions and support, that we would definitely revisit that and, and look for alternative solutions.
Is there a potential for every, you know, four or five years, whatever the case might be, to go out for an RFP to try and test their competitiveness?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, Counselor Schumacher. I guess the only caveat to that is that if you are going out seek with an RFP, then you have to make that commitment that if someone comes in at a more significant decrease in the cost, that we would have to be ready to move to a new ERP solution.
Do you, or can you, can you choose? Can you choose not to change? I mean, that, that's probably more of a question for the CAO or perhaps Ms. Fields.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Schumacher. I would honestly have to review that in a bit more detail to get back to you with formal answer.
Okay, I, I, I appreciate that this is, you know, kind of a, a very specialized service. It just, when we've got things like this, I think, I think we should be keeping the, the service provider on their toes by making sure they're giving us their best price every now and then.
Those are all my questions and comments.
Thank you, Counsel Schumacher. Anybody else on 6.5? Seeing none? We've read the motion. Votes up, all in favor? Opposed? Carried. That brings us to 6.21. Counselor Hollingsworth, we'll have the clerk read the motion once she's through, validating the current vote, and then I'll let you... Yeah, go ahead.
There is, there is no vote under the consent part of the agenda for 6.21 because there is a bylaw, but the report is on for discussion.
Okay, and then we'll, we'll call the bylaw then afterwards. Okay, so 6.21, Counselor Hollingsworth, go ahead.
Thank you. So basically, I appreciate this Item 6.21 very, very much. And so I just have a question. On page five of the report, the subheading states, "Private property or any other land." I believe it says, it states in words, "Private property, owner of the lands where the shopping cart has been placed or abandoned." I guess, to our legal counsel, can you just elaborate what that means? When you say private property, I'm under the assumption if someone is just a residential area, it's on someone's own property on their front lawn, they're responsible, and potentially, can they be fined? Can you just elaborate?
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Hollingsworth. Yes, the, the resolution itself looked at enforcement mechanisms for carts abandoned outside of the business premises. carts abandoned outside of the business premises. And in dealing with the issue over the years, in consultation with Public Works and Building, um, it was found that not only are carts abandoned on city property, but oftentimes they're also abandoned on private property. Um, either a private property owner themselves returning a cart and keeping at their premises. Um, or sometimes there are landlords and there's a multi-unit complex and there's a number of carts that are also present at the complex. So this tool gives us the opportunity to also deal with private property, the abandonment of carts on private property. Otherwise, if we fail to include that in the bylaw, it would be, only be, we'd be limited enforcing that on city property only, whereas our experience has been that it occurs also on private property.
Okay, thanks for that clarification. Um, so here's a scenario. Um, over the last twenty-four hours, I have received seven emails from constituents. And one particular, I'm just going to make up the address, but one particular person lives on a street within Ward One. Um, they have a nice, wonderful, organized front yard. And so if a cart shows up on their yard, you know, in the morning, then technically they could be fined. Is that correct? I mean, this is just a single dwelling, single family dwelling. Am I understanding that correctly?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Hollingsworth. The flexibility is built into the bylaw to handle a myriad of circumstances and I can understand what your constituent is saying. So it's a good opportunity to clarify that the intention here obviously is multifaceted. Um, to deal with your constituents' concern, if it is the case that it's just a third-party person like that, the bylaw itself gives the uh, chief building official the opportunity to deal with either the property owner or the business. In most cases, it would be the business. But if we find that it's a private property owner that continually repeat offense, offends the bylaw and there are circumstances that support dealing with the private property owner, the tool is there then to deal with the private property owner. So just to assure your constituents there, everything would be looked at at a case-specific basis. Um, and there are certain circumstances where it does make sense to do that. Um, our goal is certainly not to deal with it on an offense basis. Our goal is, first of all, to deal with it on a compliance basis to get businesses to deal with developing a system, collecting carts when they're there. And then, once it gets down the chain of other sort of scenarios, we have the tools there to be able to respond.
Okay, and just one last clarification. So it sounds like if it shows up on um, Mrs. Smith's front yard and it would definitely was not her, um, the bylaw officer would have a conversation with Mrs. Smith. Uh, and she would not be responsible to try to jam that cart into her van and try to take it back to one of the grocery stores or wherever it came from. Um, how would it be removed from her front lawn? Would she be responsible or how would that look?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Hollingsworth. The bylaw itself gives the opportunity for the bylaw enforcement officer to give notice to the business that owns the cart to deal with pickup. So that mechanism is in place to have that opportunity to deal with the private property owner itself, himself or herself, or the potential landlord. If we're seeing like in, in situations across the city, sometimes there are private property owners where there's twenty, thirty carts that are present there. So in those cases, um, we, we want to have a multifaceted approach. So it's not just, and, and we've also consulted with uh, business owners to say that there's, there, it's not just business owners that have caused the issues that we're experiencing. There's different components there. So the flexibility is built in there so that in the case of the constituent you're suggesting, Mrs. Smith, we would be reaching out to the business owner to collect the cart at that time.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you for the clarification. Um, it helps with these seven different emails. Um, I appreciate this bylaw very, very much and I know that all of you have done your homework and contacted and looked at other communities. Um, and yes, it is an eyesore. So I do support this. However, your clarification, your education tonight, very helpful. So thank you, Melanie.
Thank you, councillor Hollingsworth.
Okay, so just for, for everybody's clarity, I have councillor Nero, councillor Bruny, and then councillor Shoemaker, and then councillor D4.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, my question and concern was brought up by councillor Hollingsworth. I understand the explanation. I do have, still have a concern that if, if a cart is on, left on somebody's private property uh, and it was not that person, the homeowner that brought it there, uh, and we're going to call the business uh, that the cart belongs to to pick it up, uh, how long does this private property owner have to look at this cart on their lawn? So I don't know.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Nero. I can direct this. Some question might be better answered by building. If Francois Couture is on the line, um, it's going to follow the mechanisms of the dirty yards process. So he can certainly explain the timelines there.
Yes, through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Nero. The timelines will be dealt with same as the dirty yard process, which is ten days. Uh, once we're notified, they have ten days to rectify the situation. If not, it will go to tender and twenty-four hours after that, the successful tender will be awarded and they will have five days to uh, clean the site or get rid of the cart.
Yeah, I, I, I just can't see that working ten days. Uh, I mean, we struggle with that in the dirty yards bylaw that sometimes becomes an issue because we have to wait that long uh, for a cart to be on somebody's lawn that's been left there and a process that takes ten days. Uh, I don't know if that's acceptable. If that, if I was the property owner, I certainly would just put that cart on city property and let the bylaw take over where you find a cart on city property. Uh, if that's what we want to tell our private homeowners, then uh, I think we're making a mistake in this part of the bylaw. There, there has to be another answer to dealing with that, with that cart that's left on somebody's property that they did not put there. Uh, I appreciate, I appreciate the answer that we would deal with it, the same as dirty yards. But I think, I think that would take much too long for, for something like this to stay in somebody's front yard. I, I don't know who wants to comment to that. If there's another way around this, um, I certainly think we should, we should consider it.
Thank you, councillor Nero. Uh, so let's just, let's come back to that. I, that, that is the recurring kind of concern that I see council having with this bylaw. So let's move through any other issues and then we'll come back to, to that point. Deal with that point at the end if we can.
Yeah, let me just finish by saying if, if I have no other issues with the rest of the bylaw, it's just that main issue.
Okay. And councillor Bruny.
Mayor to Melanie and to Susan. Was there any consideration that the carts that are stranded can be picked up by city staff, put them in uh, on Sackville Road and the businesses would have to come and pick up, pick up the carts? And there was a charge per cart that the city can cover the cost and possibly make some revenue?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Bruny. Uh, yes, consideration was given to that alternative. The, the public works yard at this point um, certainly wouldn't have the storage means to organize by uh, each different organization that we potentially could be dealing with and/or inventorying the system, which we did see other places do that. We felt that that was a whole uh, process, which at this point in time, we certainly did not have the staffing and space to engage. Um, which we therefore included the option of the, the store themselves, work, working with them to collect it earlier and/or um, potentially, in fact, just recycling the material, which is certainly the last option that we would like to see happen, right, where it was collected and in fact brought to a metal recycler. But if, if the company would not cooperate and/or have the effective plan to control the carts, then that is an alternative that we included in the bylaw.
Um, I, I won't discuss regarding the homeowners that that have a card in front of their house that someone else placed it. But maybe if you can clarify, clarify a little bit regarding businesses, how will businesses be fined?
Um, through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Bruny. Uh, the, the approach is multifaceted. So initially, a business would, if it essentially it mirrors the same, whether it be city or private property. Um, if it's not a hazard, um, where, where Public Works would be operationally taxed, or there could be a liability issue where the cart would necessarily end up on city, on a roadway, et cetera. Um, we would, um, in this case, the, the, the team is met and the goal would be for the business owner to collect it in accordance with their system that they've, they've submitted and approved. Um, so they would be contacted, um, given a notice letter and then respond and pick it up. So if we find that we're in that same repeated, repeated situation where we're continually writing and asking and, and then it's the case that they're not picking them up, then our goal then would be to move into a different stream and then proceed with charges. So in that case, we would, it would follow very similar to other building-related issues. Building enforcement officers would have the inspections, would have their notes for attending on-site for the fact that a no-asset was sent and not complied with and then could proceed with charges being laid.
Now, i- if we look at all the grocery stores, your initial letter would go to their head office, correct? You're on mute.
Sorry, thank you. Um, through Mr. Mayor to councillor Bruny. Um, the system requires a contact person to be named, just for that reason, exactly what you uh, highlighted there. We don't want to have a difficult situation where it's, it's suggested that notice was given and it was not received. So part of the system itself requires a contact person to be provided for name, et cetera, address and email address so that when notice is required to be given for any matters related to the bylaw, it would be given to that person.
So you send a letter to their corporate office, they, they receive it. I think the reaction time will be very, it, it will be delayed for a lengthy period of time because I think they're gonna probably discard it for a while until the second letter goes there and maybe the third letter. In the meantime, you have that shopping cart in that particular area. I think it's creating more work for everybody, legal, our bylaw officers. And the time period is Francois said the ten days and then there's another process after the ten days, et cetera, et cetera. I, I just find that this whole process is so lengthy, just to, just to remove a shopping cart from someone's yard, for instance. And I, I'm not trying to be ignorant on, on this policy that you're trying, uh, that you're presenting us tonight. I think it's just too complicated and it's very time-consuming. That's my personal opinion. And I'll leave it at that. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, councillor Bruny, councillor Shoemaker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And first, I want to thank the building division, the legal division and Public Works for coming back with this. I think it's a very comprehensive bylaw which, which, you know, we're hearing tonight may require some tweaking around the edges, but I think it is the first step in actually dealing with this problem uh, that we have, uh, the first concrete step that we have had at our disposal since this issue's been talked about, which in my research is at least eleven or twelve years, council's been dealing with this issue. So thank you, first off. Would it be fair to say, Melanie or Susan, that the main uh, thrust of this bylaw is to ensure retailers have a system in place to collect their own carts? That's, that's objective number one.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Shoemaker. Yes, that is essentially the thrust of it and it's hopeful that that leads itself to correcting a lot of the issues that we've been experiencing.
Perfect. I appreciate that. And the timeframe, so they have to develop a plan that's submitted to the director of Public Works. The director of Public Works looks at that plan, determines whether the timeframes within which stores will pick up their carts is reasonable uh, and approves that plan. Am I, am I kind of summarizing that correctly, Susan?
Are you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Shoemaker? Yes, you are.
And then if at any point you determine that those timeframes are not reasonable, uh, you can essentially unilaterally shorten the timeframes and impose the new timeframe upon the retailer.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Shoemaker. That's absolutely my understanding. Uh, we would have several iterations if it is not meeting our satisfaction.
Right. And then the provision to charge, if necessary, private property owners. I'm trying to understand the, the reason behind why that might have been included. Uh, and, and is it, is it fair to say it was because there are kind of usual suspects that take carts regularly off of, off of uh, stores' properties and bring them to their own house to deliver their groceries or whatever shopping they're doing and then leave the cart there abandoned in their property?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Shoemaker. Yes, I think with the companies we spoke with, it was very important to them that this hybrid approach and be available and that they have, in fact, or we have, in fact, the opportunity to pursue those individuals which constantly are removing their property. It's in fact theft of their property.
Right, and, and I, I had some discussions with retailers. I know councillor Hilsinger did as well. Uh, fair to say that retailers had some input on this, uh, on this proposed bylaw?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, you are correct.
And obviously their objective is to see these carts stay on their property. As I understand, they're somewhere in the range of two hundred and fifty to three hundred dollars per cart.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Shoemaker. That was confirmed with the company we were speaking with. Yes.
Well, I think this has the outline of a very good system. It may require tweaking. I agree with councillor Nero. If we're doing the whole ten-day uh, process, tender process, five days to respond, five days to enforce, I, I think that's too long. Um, I, I think there are other solutions to that, but but more importantly, I think the main goal of this bylaw, which is achieved by the draft is, uh, it, it's great, which is to enforce stores picking up their own carts and not putting the cost uh, that Walmart should be bearing or that Food Basics should be bearing or that Metro should be bearing on, uh, you know, uh, Joe or John from Apprentice or, or Amy Avenue.
Is that the extent of your comments, councillor Shoemaker?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so our councillor due for.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Um, my question through you to either the CAO or Mr. Elliott. From a staff perspective, does this bylaw result in in bylaw officers having more tools at their disposal to bring down complaints? Or is this going to increase the number of complaints that bylaw officers are handling?
Mr. Mayor, to councillor due for, I, it would be more work. This is more work for the bylaw officers.
Thanks for your frank answer, Mr. Elliott. That was my suspicion too, and I have really significant concern with this bylaw. It's not uh, in any way a criticism of the good work that legal, building and public works have done. Um, it's a criticism of the priorities that this council has, you know, said they support, brought forward and then not supported with the resources that were needed. Um, if we're going to take the issues of vacant buildings and derelict housing seriously, um, if we're going to create a building and bylaw enforcement task force that's going to make recommendations to city council for how to fix these problems, um, then we need to actually resource the solutions that were brought forward by that task force. Um, instead, we're now looking at a different bylaw that's looking to take shopping carts and, and add them to the list of responsibilities that we only have two bylaw enforcement officers handling. Um, you know, we've seen these vacant buildings, uh, we've had, what, like six go up in flames in the last couple of months, some of them with bodies in them. To think that we can't put more staffing resources towards that kind of problem and are instead going to take on, you know, errant shopping carts, which are, are a legitimate issue um, for the community. But to me, in the triage of, of problems that are facing us and the amount of resources that we have for building and bylaw enforcement officials to tackle those problems, um, this ranks, uh, this ranks a lot this ranks, this ranks a lot lower for me than the other issues that we're seeing around town. I support the creation of a requirement for retailers to have a system in place. The rest of it, I just, I don't see how we can resource it without taking away from work that is already sorely under-resourced. So those are my comments, Mr. Mayor.
That's a very, you know, very, I think, very good comments, Counselor Dufour. I think it's an important point that you're making. We ask staff to address this issue, staff's doing what it's being asked to do. Staff developed a bylaw to address the issue that Council raised, but all these things require resources, and we have known for a while now that we feel that we are under-resourced in bylaw enforcement. We want to do better at property standards and bylaw enforcement, but to do that, we have to put more resources to it. And until we put more resources to it, if we continue on adding bylaws that have to be enforced, we're going to continue to see challenges in that department enforcing the bylaws that are at stake. Do I have any other counselor comments on this issue? Or questions? So I'm just going to, my sense of it, Counselor Vazanalan, go ahead.
I just want to reiterate, because Counselor Dufour and I do run into a lot of discussions, and especially with the Imet and the support that needs to happen there. Wouldn't shopping carts just fall under dirty yard? That's also my question. So, you know, we do know that we have certain buildings that regularly have to get dirty yard inspections because of their dumpsters that are overflowing. It's usually multi-unit buildings, there might be, you know, shopping carts there as well, you know, a yard that hasn't been maintained, that has the tall grasses and garbage and shopping carts. So could this not be included within that dirty yard inspection? I mean, I get it with the shopping carts, and there is a gentleman that goes around town and picks them up and delivers them, that they pay for privately. And I do commend staff, it was a very well-done report, but we have, we, I just don't know how we can properly resource and prioritize this bylaw when we're still dealing with a lot of buildings that need bylaw enforcement, and couldn't this all become part of dirty yard?
Well, I think Counselor Vazanalan, there's two parts. Potentially, the part that relates to bylaw, the shopping carts being in people's yards could potentially be approached, as you're suggesting it. But the regime to actually have the retailers and the businesses who have shopping carts, like, have a plan, which is approved by the city, that is, I think, an independent issue that isn't canvassed anywhere. I think the intention was to try and do something so that could be canvassed, and potentially, if that is canvassed properly, you won't have this dirty yard issue or this issue of these being randomly left in different places in the city. So I think, from my sense of counsel, was that there's a lot of support to address this issue and to regulate this, but I saw some really common concern about how it affects private property owners and the regime in place to address private property owners. Is that, is that fair, counsel, as an assessment of the conversation? So maybe the most appropriate thing to do is to refer it back to staff on that specific issue, so they can consider what was said tonight, and reassess the bylaw in that light, and maybe return, return it to us. Mr. CEO, do you have any perspective on that?
To you, Mr. Mayor and counsel, based on the discussion tonight, and based on the fact that this is a significant bylaw being brought forward to you, I agree with that assessment, and having it referred back to staff can do some necessary discussion and revisions back to you.
Proceed, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so Counselor Nero, I'm gonna come to you in a second, I'm just gonna go to Counselor Shoemaker's procedural question.
Through you to the CEO or to Ms. Dzinski, is it possible to accept that portion of the bylaw with respect to fines on private property? I think, it appears to me anyways, there is somewhat more widespread support for passing the system by which retailers would have to have a plan in place by September 7th, or whatever the date is. So is it possible just to accept that portion of the bylaw?
I'll speak to that. Well, it's technically possible, it's probably not advisable. It would probably be better just to refer it back, and staff would commit to having it back before council in a very short timeframe.
Yeah, Counselor Shoemaker, I would share that position. I don't know how advisable would be to cut out a part of the bylaw without considering whether you're affecting the remainder of the bylaw unintentionally in an adverse way.
All right, that's, that's fine. I guess if that were going to be the case, I would be seeking to put a timeframe of the July meeting, whatever date that is, on the return of the revised bylaw.
Counselor Hilsinger, you had your hand up, and we'll address your comments, and then I'll go to Counselor Nero.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All I was gonna ask was the same question as Counselor Shoemaker was. Could those things be separated? Could, can, can the, those folks that have carts be informed that, you know, a system is required to be put in place? I completely appreciate what Counselor Dufour said, I get it. But what, and how do we accomplish what we need to accomplish without overburdening the system? Because I can tell you, you know, in business owners and homeowners, in my word, in Matthew's word, they're very, very frustrated with this issue, and, and we just don't, we want to see something happen and happen sooner than later. That's all I wanted to say.
Okay, so Counselor Nero, are you gonna move to refer the matter back to staff for return to the July meeting?
I would definitely do that, return it back to July 12, 21.
Do I have a second here for that referral? Counselor Hollingsworth, all in favor of the referral? Motion posed. Refer motion is carried. Appears to be 10 to 1. Okay, so that, that addresses that matter for the time being. Madam Clerk, I think that brings us to 7.?
7.1?
Yep, 7.?
Northern Community Center Twin Pad Expansion.
7.1, yep.
Yep, I've got a, there will be three motions, but I'll read the one, the one on the report. "A motion by Counselors Nero and Hilsinger resolves that the report of the manager of purchasing, chief financial officer, and deputy CEO of Community Development and Enterprise Services dated May 31, 2021 concerning Northern Community Center Twin Pad Expansion be received, and that the tender for the Northern Community Center Twin Pad Expansion be awarded to Alice Dawn Corporation at their low-tendered base price, meeting specifications of $27,900,000 plus HST, and that the city's consultant be authorized to issue the needed letter of intent for the project to be approved. Further, that city council approve that the architecture and design fees budget be increased by $338,420 to an offset limit of $1,648,430. Further, that city council approve utilizing $2,610,000 of the announced 2021 increase to the Canada Community Building Fund for the project."
Okay, so that's the main motion. Now, there were some questions that were sent to me about the walking track and how that would work. That's not an amendment to this motion, it would be an additional motion that would be moved to include that in the project. So that would be, you know, another motion that would be put forward that we would, so that's, but we're on the main motion. Is there clarity on the main motion and what we're currently discussing, Counselor Nero?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Based on the announcement tonight, do we need, still need the further that city council approve utilizing $2.6 million of the Canada Community Building Fund?
So we've got a revised financing report on the account, the agenda. But to answer your question, no, that would be a decision that we would make. Counsel can decide to finance the entire difference and not allocate those funds. It's at our discretion at this point.
I believe we should do that and save those funds for some other use. Do.
Okay, so that, so that would be, I'm just looking for the, to pull the main motion up on my own computer here. So Madam Clerk, the main motion you read was from the main report, right?
That's correct.
Yeah, so Counselor Nero, what you would be doing is amending that motion to remove that reference.
That's correct.
Yeah, and to remove that reference, just to direct that staff finance the balance of the funds required to complete the project.
Correct.
Mr. CEO, do you see an issue with the way I frame that?
I don't, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to just double-check it with the CFO.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. No, the, we will be removing that one section of the resolution that was just mentioned, because we will no longer require the Build Canada funding as well. We, if option two is accepted by council, we will have to add that into the resolution as well.
Yeah, okay, so Counselor Nero, this, what happened is, this was drafted, obviously, in advance of confirmation that we received the funding. So having received that funding, we do have a new report on the, on the, on the agenda that's before you, that was put on today after the announcement, that goes through a financing model for the project. And council can certainly direct to find, decide to finance the remainder of the cost in full.
So for clarification, do, do we amend this resolution then?
What I, we, we would have to, because that's the way it's been presented, but I think what, what the CFO is telling us is they expected that would be the case. Am I correct in that respect, Mr. White?
Yes.
Okay, so, so the, we'll have a second here for that suggestion. Counselor Christian, are you putting your hand up to second that? Okay, so all in favor? Okay, so that, the motion will be amended then, so that we'll remove the reference to using the $2.6 million for the Canada Building Fund, and the basis that we're proceeding on is that the amount of funds that we're going to be required to complete the project will be financed. But I think we have to just get clarity that we are going to move forward with the project. You know, I think there was gonna be a much more substantial discussion tonight if, if we were self-financing the entire project, but since that we have a considerable amount of funding now from provincial government, which we are thankful for, it seems to me that we're all very comfortable moving ahead with the project. Is that, is that, now I'm talking about the twin pad itself, we're not talking about the walking track at this point. Is that clear, counsel, am I correct in that regard?
Yeah.
Okay, so the only comment, the only question before council then is whether we include the additional project, which is the walking track. So if there is support on council for doing that, we will have a motion that moves forward. Counselor Shoemaker sent a message earlier to General Review indicating he wanted to move that, so I'm gonna give him the first opportunity to speak to it. And then Counselor Bruny, I see your hand, if you want to speak to it after, Counselor Shoemaker, we'll do that. Counselor Shoemaker, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess just procedurally, do we need to know if that's got a second here before we can speak to it?
Yeah, Counselor Bruny had his hand up there, so he will second that. But I was gonna give you a chance to explain what you wanted to include, and then ask for a second here, but you've got one in any event.
I appreciate that, thank you. Obviously, given the announcement of $18 million funding from the province, which is, you know, as good as we could have ever asked for, frankly, from, from either level or both levels of government, I think it makes sense, we're gonna finance, we're likely to finance the project over a shorter period of time. We're gonna save a significant amount of costs and interests that we'll pay over the course of the term. Previous councils, as you noted in your remarks, have scaled back on projects to get them done on time and on budget. We've now got the opportunity for essentially half of what we were, you know, going to debate spending, to do the whole project fully fitted to the, to a level that we may not otherwise have been able to do. So I think it makes sense to add the walking track. It's in a, you know, it's neighbored by residential areas all around. You'll have great usage of it, the soccer fields are currently used for walking in the West End, and I know that there is great usage there, so I strongly support adding in the walking track to the project, so that we can build the, I think, the community center that we all wished we could build a couple of months ago when we were debating it. We can actually achieve it now at even less than we were prepared to spend just a couple of months ago. So I am moving that motion. I'll be the first to admit, I wouldn't be adding this in if we hadn't got provincial funding. In fact, I probably would have had a hard time supporting, you know, even the scaled-down version. I would have wanted to see further edits to the, to the plan, but I'm happy to be able to move this motion, and hopeful that the council will support adding the walking trail, or walking path back in to the project.
Thank you, Counselor Shoemaker, Counselor Bruny, you second that motion, did you want to speak to it?
Just a couple, a couple words, Mr. Mayor. First of all, thanks to the provincial government for providing the $18 million. I think it's a great facility for the West End area, a twin pad arena is needed. What I, what I really am happy to see is, we're gonna have a walking track there. Instead of the residents, taxpayers, et cetera, using the soccer facilities to walk, we're gonna have a properly-built walking track for them to use. So I think that's exciting news, and let's move forward with this, thanks.
Any other counselors want to speak to the addition of the walking track? Counselor Dufour.
I just have a question, Mr. Mayor. Pardon my ignorance, but what's the difference between walking in the Northern Community Center on the soccer fields and walking in the new twin pad?
We'll have Mr. Bear address that question.
Thanks.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Dufour. Right now, the way the, the walking is permitted at the NCC is essentially when we don't have the fields booked for soccer. So it's a bit more, I would say, random, if you will, like, we don't have a set schedule because it's really based on availability of those fields. Whereas, obviously, the walking track around the arena would be available for walking, you know, anytime the facility is open.
Understand, thank you very much.
Any other comments or questions on the addition of the walking track? I personally also support the inclusion of that product, that part of the project into the broader project. Thanks staff for their quick work on putting this additional information report with respect to the financing on the agenda. And I know, importantly, for everybody watching and for the provincial government and for us, that the funding we received today doesn't just help us complete the project, it actually will save us about $10 million in interest costs over the life, over the life of the debt servicing. One of the challenges I was having with this project myself wasn't just the price tag, which I always felt was a very significant price tag, but what it was gonna cost to finance that price over a long period of time. So it wasn't just a $28 to $30 million project, it was much more than that when you considered the debt servicing costs. And the money received today helps us decrease those debt servicing costs, if I'm understanding the report correctly, by approximately $10 million. So this makes the project a very achievable project. And frankly, we're not saddling councils for decades to come with this debt. We'll be able to pay this debt down in a much shorter, more expedited timeframe, and in return, there'll be a facility here in the West End of the city that will be used by our community for decades, for sure, and a modern and safe facility to replace the one that we've been keeping together with just the sheer will of, and hard work of staff for a number of years now. So, Madam Clerk, we've got the main motion then has an amendment whereby the city's portion of the project will be debt-financed, including the walking track. So everybody's aware of what's in front of us now. I'm gonna welcome any further questions or comments before we deal with the matter. Do we have any other comments or questions from, from counselors?
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, the motion that we have open at the moment is the Shoemaker-Bruny motion to add the walking track. We passed the amendment to the main, so once we've done this one, we'll go back to have the main as amended.
So we'll vote on this motion then to pass it. So everybody in favor of the inclusion of the walking track?
Question?
Counselor Nero?
Again, for clarification, this motion says the walking track with bowl windows. The bowl windows is 149. An additional 149,000 plus the walking track is 1.2. So is that motion?
Yes.
Adding those two together?
It is, it is. It's as, as outlined in the report.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Were you in favor, councillor Nero?
Yeah, I'll go with that.
Okay, okay, so any opposed? Councillor Christian, you're opposed? Okay, so the, the walking track is included in the project. So then we have Madam Clerk a vote on the main kind of motion to approve the project. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So we've had to adjust a lot of this council, as you're aware, on the fly as a result of, of the information that we received, and that was announced today. So council, we've got the main project in front of us. And you've got all the material that you, you've had to date in front of you. This has been a council a number of times, it's been discussed at length and very substantially. There are a number of reports and assessments that went into it, and I think it was a very good piece of staff work. Want to thank them for their hard work on it, CEO and Mr. Bear and his team in community development. Also want to thank the team in financing for the significant amount of work that they did to support the project. Councillor, do we have any other questions or comments on the main motion? Councillor Shoemaker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be brief. I was on the last council, as were you, when we had a very significant health scare at the McMeekin, which could have been substantially worse than it was. And we're, we're fortunate that it, that it did not play out, that worst scenario did not play out. It was time for a new arena then, and we're overdue for a new arena now. We're able to do it, thanks, as you note, to the funding of the province, which is saving us not just 18 million upfront, but 10 million over the course of 30 years. So it's really saving us 28 million, which is the whole cost of the project that we're approving tonight. So I was happy to work alongside councillor Gardi on the Twin Pad Arena Committee, along with Mr. Bear and, and his team in community services, Mr. Lamming and Idea are, are architects on this project. And I'm happy to see, as I noted in my comments earlier, a project that's not scaled back. One that is the full project, the, the fullest project that could have been presented to council is before council, and it's being approved. It's not a single pad, it's not a skinny double pad, it's not of the removal of the walking track. Everything that we considered including is included. And we've only been able to do that thanks to the good work of our consultants, Idea, the good work of Mr. Bear and his community service team, finance team, the Twin Pad Committee. But not, obviously, none of it would have been, I think, possible without the assistance of the significant financial assistance of the province. And so I'm, I'm very grateful for that. I know, I think all of council is. And it made our night a lot earlier tonight, because I think we would have been here late into the night debating what to include and what not to include in the project. So I'm grateful for many reasons and happy to support this project. Happy to see it get off the ground.
Councillor Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just going to keep this brief as well. Councillor Shoemaker pretty much touched on everything I was going to say. It's, I'm just happy to see it. It's great to see something come to the West End fully fleshed out. I want to thank the province, Minister Romano for the help, the committee that did all the hard work to, to get us here, and everyone who put the bid in, and can't wait to see this finished.
Councillor Gardi?
Oh, thanks, Mr. Mayor. I, I just want to thank, you know, council for supporting an initiative, this initiative for the West End of the community and for, you know, being behind, the community at large, for the most part, being behind a piece of infrastructure like this in the West End of the community. And I know, Mr. Mayor, you and senior staff did a lot of work with, with the province and the different levels of government and advocating for this facility. And you should, you guys should be recognized for that as well. Thanks, it's a great project.
Okay, council, any other questions or, or comments on the, the main motion? Okay, so Madam Clerk, you have the vote up on eScribe here. So all in favor? Any opposed? Carried unanimously. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
So then we move to 7.3.1.1. The revised financing for the Northern Community Centre Twin Pad Expansion. I have a motion by councillors Nero and Hillsinger resolved that the report of the chief financial officer and treasurer dated May 31, 2021 regarding the revised financing plan for the Northern Community Centre Twin Pad Expansion be received as information.
Okay, all in favor? Motion is carried.
That will take us to agenda item 8.1. I have a motion by councillors Shoemaker and Nero. Whereas in 2020, the council of the city of Sault Ste. Marie waived interest and penalties on late payment of the tax installments that came due after the March 2020 lockdown measures. And whereas in February 2021, the council of the city of Sault Ste. Marie waived interest and penalties on late payment of the tax installments that came due from January 1, 2021 to June 30, 2021 due to further lockdowns being imposed. And whereas the province and the global economy remain gripped by the coronavirus pandemic, with expected vaccines providing hope that we may be able to emerge from the ongoing lockdowns that businesses and residents have faced in 2020 and into 2021. And whereas continued stay-at-home orders and emergency orders have affected the ability of local businesses to stay afloat through these challenging times. And whereas the council of the city of Sault Ste. Marie must assist businesses to the extent possible, now therefore be it resolved that council waive interest and penalties on late payment of taxes for the balance of the 2021 calendar year, with the waiver of interest and penalties expiring on December 31, 2021.
Councillor Shoemaker, I think this motion is pretty self-explanatory, but you're welcome to address it.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. It's, it's pretty, it should be pretty familiar at this point to all of council. I noted in my comments back in late February, when this motion was brought, that the first tax installment date was upon us. I think at that time, it was five to 10 days away. And business had, businesses had been forced at that point to be closed for the entire calendar year. We did emerge briefly from a lockdown there. I don't know if people remember that. But now we're back in it and we're six months into the year tomorrow. And businesses are still locked down. So I think that the city has some very limited tools at its disposal. Waiving interest and penalties to the end of the year is one of them. Let's pray that by, we won't be having this discussion again in 2022. But I think it's, it's a very reasonable way and, and one of the very few ways we can help our small businesses. And I think it's incumbent upon us to do that, given the limited availability of tools we've got. So I hope council will support it as they have in the past.
Councillor Nero, do you want to add anything to that?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just briefly, I, I agree with councillor Shoemaker that hopefully we don't have to deal with a resolution of this sort in 2022. It is, I think, I believe it's a necessary resolution at this time, but let's hope we don't have to pass another one. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Nero. I support the resolution. Thank you both for bringing it. I think as councillor Shoemaker and you, we have to continue to do what we can. There are a number of industries that are particularly hard hit. One of them, you know, barbers and hairdressers and that, that, that whole industry is really struggling. The, the resources don't seem to be available to assist that industry to the same degree as some other industries. And if they can get some relief on having to pay their property taxes on time and they don't get penalties for that, I am happy to try and do that as much as we can. So any other comments, questions on this? All in favor? Motion is carried.
Under agenda item 8.2, councillor, motion by councillors Hollingsworth and Christian. Whereas on March 29, 2021, Sault Ste. Marie City Council approved a pilot project to provide transit services to Pointe Cheyenne Beach during summer weekends in 2021. And whereas Sault Ste. Marie has many outdoor attractions and activities that are not currently accessible by public transit, including Hiawatha Highlands. Now therefore be it resolved that staff be requested to report to council on options for an additional bus road that would run on weekends after Labor Day to bring residents from one or both of the transit transfer hubs to Hiawatha Highlands.
Okay, so councillor Hollingsworth, this is your resolution. Go ahead.
Thank you. It's ironic that we just earlier tonight recognized Recreation Parks Month. And here we are talking about Hiawatha, which is a wonderful natural park that many of us use. There's not really much more to add, except that, once again, Sault Ste. Marie, our wonderful community, has many gorgeous areas that unfortunately are not accessible to families, individuals. I'm, I always wear my, even though I'm not on the DSAP Board anymore, I always wear that hat and look out for those that may not have transportation. And this promotes family time, it promotes physical activity and votes healthy living. And also it's good for the environment to have shared transit. So having said that, I hope that tonight council will support this. It was well-yield support for the beach bus. And hypothetically, if the both pilots come back positive, that maybe we can take it one step further and look at creating an adventure bus that goes eventually to other areas that are not accessible so that everyone can enjoy our great outdoors. So again, that's, that's pretty much it. Thank you.
Councillor Christian, did you want to speak to this resolution? No? Councillor, do we have any questions or comments in the resolution? All in favor of the resolution? Any opposed? I don't think there was, but I just wanted to double check. Okay, thank you. Resolution's passed.
And under agenda item 8.3, a motion by councillors Gardi and Vezel Allen. Whereas there are many railway crossings within the boundaries of the city of Sault Ste. Marie. And whereas there are many different arrangements for each crossing through agreements between the city and the different rail entities that own the respective lines and/or Transport Canada order. And whereas there are different causes for degradation in the structural condition of these crossings, not the least of which being our harsh climate and the extreme conditions these crossings are exposed to. And whereas it is very important that these railway crossings are maintained for the safety of the people and cargo being transported on the rails, as well as for the safety and protection of those crossing them with their vehicles. And whereas when these crossings are not regularly and properly maintained, they could lead to significant damage to a crossing motor vehicle that could result in a serious expense to the family or business who owns, operates the vehicle. Now therefore be it resolved that city staff be requested to prepare a report to city council that includes the most up-to-date schedule for maintenance of each of the crossings within the boundaries of the city of Sault Ste. Marie, along with which parties are involved in the maintenance plan for each crossing and the city's share and/or responsibilities at each of these crossings.
Okay, councillor Gardi, this is your resolution?
I think it's pretty clear. I'm just hopeful that a majority of, of city council will be supportive of the ask for the report. Thank you.
Do, do, does councillor Vezel Allen have any comments?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, only that I think this will make it much easier for both staff and councillors to understand, especially when we're getting complaints from constituents, where the go-to is in the schedule. There are a lot of crossings, both in my ward and they go into councillor Gardi's ward. So I think this would just make it easier to get results and repairs done to crossings when we need to. And it's also a safety matter that I think needs to be addressed to make sure that they are safe. Especially we're seeing more people doing active transport with bikes. And I've seen, you know, some potholes and some issues. So I think it's important that we, we know who's responsible, and I think it'll be easier for everyone all around to get results.
Thank you. Council, any questions or comments on the resolution? Seeing none, all in favor of the resolution? Any opposed? Resolution carries.
That will bring us to bylaws. I have a motion by councillors Nero and Hillsinger resolved that all bylaws under item 11 of the agenda under date May 31, 2021, save and accept bylaws 2021-92, 2021-99, 2021-114, and 2021-115 be approved.
All in favor? Carried.
I cast the votes for the three bylaws that are accepted due to councillor Shoemaker's conflict. The first being bylaw 2021-99, a motion by councillors Nero and Hillsinger resolved that bylaw 2021-99 being a bylaw to assume for public use and establishes public streets, various parcels of land conveyed to the city be passed in open council this 31st day of May 2021.
All in favor? Carried.
A motion by councillors Nero and Hillsinger resolved that bylaw 2021-114 being a bylaw to adopt amendment number 232 to the official plan for the city of Sault Ste. Marie. 15544158 Ontario Inc., 249 Old Garden River Road and 260 Milk Creek Drive be passed in open council this 31st day of May 2021.
All in favor? Carried.
And a motion by councillors Nero and Hillsinger resolved that bylaw 2021-115 being a bylaw to amend Sault Ste. Marie zoning bylaws 2005-150 concerning lands located at 249 Old Garden River Road and 260 Milk Creek Drive be passed in open council this 31st day of May 2021.
All in favor? Carried.
And a motion by councillors Bernie and Hillsinger that this council now adjourn.
All in favor? Thank you, council. Good work. See you soon.
Bye, everybody.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.